Hey Minot, 2020 is the year for more. Yes, it's the US Census season and with it, Minot could see more. More opportunities for business, more federal funding for roads, for our schools, and for our community. Take part in something more. Take the census, because for us, more means more. Visit Minot and D.
We'll call the meeting of the Minot City Council to order today for Monday, April 20th, 2020. It is 5:30 PM. I will ask everyone in the audience or at the dais if they haven't already to put their electronic devices on vibrate or on silent. Again, before we get going here, I do want to remind everyone and also acknowledge that this is a little bit different for a city council meeting as City Hall has been closed to the public per the Attorney General's ruling for one to keep staff and council as safe as people can and with social separation. And again, we hope that this ends as quickly as possible to resume normal operations not only within the city but the community as a whole. So appreciate everyone's patience and willingness to work through these difficult times. Roll call, please.
Jansen.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Pittner.
Here.
Padrigula.
Here.
Straight.
Here.
Wolfski.
Here.
Sitma.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Olson.
Before we begin our agenda, I'd like to make a motion, I guess if it's needed in the form of a motion, to move item 7.1 to the beginning of our agenda.
That is the COVID-19 Financial Impacts and Recommendations Adjustment Motion to Move it essentially 7.1 to item number three per the request from staff.
Second the motion to change the order.
Second by Alderman Padrigula. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padrigula.
Yes.
Straight.
Yes.
Wolfski.
Yes.
Sitma.
Yes.
Jansen.
Yes.
Motion approved 7.1 is the COVID-19 Financial Impacts and Recommendations of Adjustment. We do have our Financial Director Acting City Manager, David Lakefield, here for some of the latest impacts and revised numbers as far as what we are anticipating at this point for the impacts of COVID-19 to both sales tax and Hub City Funding revenue. Give him just a moment to get everything set up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully I'll get this thing to work correctly. Give me. There we go. All right, last council meeting, City Manager Barry had presented a rough or an initial attempt at a forecast for revenue or anticipated revenue reductions. This is a little bit of an update on what was presented at the last council meeting. This first slide here is our sales tax collections by month for the last four years and the first three months of 2020. And as you can see, these revenues are variable in a normal situation. And we just got the numbers in today and actually March was a pretty good month compared to prior years in March. This is sales tax money that is payable to the city in March, I believe for February sales. So this is lagging probably almost two months here. So we really haven't seen the impact on sales tax yet from the data that we have currently. So in our forecast, and we'll show you the forecast reductions that we had, we used 25% reduction in sales tax from 2019 actuals. Year-to-date collections are actually about 5.5% over the same period as last year and a little over 6% above budget year-to-date. So so far, sales tax numbers aren't looking terrible, but we most likely haven't seen those impacts be realized yet. The next thing I want to talk briefly about before we get into all the other projections, we talked at our last meeting about Hub City revenue projections. And the West Dakota Energy Association put out a slide presentation in the last couple of weeks, giving us some updates and analysis on what we should expect on our Hub City projections. And their projections were actually better than what my initial projections were a few weeks ago. And this is a slide taken from their presentation. And this shows how the gross production tax flows through to the different buckets. And it is confusing. The takeaway from this is the Hub City money, we have two different streams, a 4-fifths stream and a 1-fifths stream. And the biggest thing that we should take away here is some of the Hub City buckets that we have this funding, a good portion of that bucket fills first before that funding goes to other areas. So at least a good portion of our Hub City funding is first in line for that gross production tax. So we most likely aren't going to see the full effect of the oil market that we're currently experiencing. And their anticipation, at least initially, was 15 to 20% reduction in gross production tax. And our forecast is a little more conservative in that we took a little bit bigger cut to that to be on the safe side. This is a spreadsheet that originated, the League of Cities had us do a little bit of an exercise on, you know, what things would look like if we had percentage cuts from some of the different revenue sources that we had. And, you know, it's very difficult to take a standard percentage reduction across the board because some of these revenue sources aren't as variable as others. So we got together and we kind of tried to take a best guess at what we thought we would experience and what the market would show. And the highlighted squares to the right are showing the decline or anticipated decline. And again, this is a bit of a crystal ball forecast at this point. We don't have a lot of good data to support this. This is just a little bit more zoomed-in version, so it's easier to read. The orange column here is the important column that we need to pay attention to. Some of these revenue sources aren't as variable, utility revenue being one of those. Typically, we're still going to have sanitation services, water sewer, storm sewer services. They aren't generally as affected by the economic climate as some of the other revenue sources. Sales tax is the next one on the list, and there's something that's unique with the sales tax that I really want to point out here. When we projected a 25% decrease in sales tax, that number was about $5.5 million reduction. When you look at the first column, the 2019 revenue column, sales tax revenues in 2019 actuals were $22.1 million. Our budget for 2020 was only $20 million. So we had a little over a $2 million cushion built in already in our budget. So we hadn't budgeted to spend everything that we necessarily thought we were going to collect. And we typically do that, we give ourselves a little bit of a cushion, we collect those dollars, they're always available in those funds for allocation in future budget cycles. So we typically have some reserves, so we spend somewhat what we're forecasting to collect and also some reserves. So that did give us a little bit of a buffer here. So even with the 25% decrease, the amount that we're looking to make up is 3.3 million instead of 5.5 million. Going down, Special Assessments is another one of those funds where that money is not as susceptible to change. That's projects that people are special assessed, that revenue is going to be assessed on their property taxes. And generally, we collect those. Some of them may be a little bit delinquent and take some time to collect, but if they don't pay the taxes, then the county takes action to collect those. Property taxes, most of our property taxes for 2020 season are already collected and we've received those. They become due and payable early in the year. If people don't take advantage of the discount and pay those in February, then the first half is due in March and the second half later in the fall. But the bulk of that has already been collected and again, not as susceptible to change. State aid from sales tax is somewhat variable here. This is based off of sales tax collections that the state gets. Usually when we budget this information, the League of Cities gives us a target number that's based on population. So we actually take their number per capita and apply it to our population, and that's how we budget our dollars. We did, in our forecast, expect about a $500,000 decrease that we accounted for. And just moving on down, trying to skip through some of these engineering and admin fees, those are charges, the engineering charges on our street improvement projects that we have funded. So in essence, we're moving those through from one department to another. We don't anticipate a big change. Highway funds, we did forecast a reduction there. Again, that's based off of, at least in some part, on fuel tax proceeds. And with usage being down, we're anticipating a cut with that. And again, some of these are extremely difficult to forecast at this point, and this is our first guess here. Building permits, the reason we don't have a cut there is we actually budgeted less than what the forecast was when we forecasted a reduction. And we didn't, we didn't put a negative number in here using that as a cushion. If it, if our forecast was more than what our budget was, we just zeroed it out so we didn't skew our numbers. Interest, interest rates plummeted at the beginning of this, and they've since bounced. Interest rates weren't really great before all this started happening. You know, I think at the top of the market, we had some CDs that were a little over 2%. They plunged their back down to the upper 1%, 1.6, 1.7%. So the difference is not as drastic as we thought. Fortunately, we have locked in some of these investments in the last year. We've been a little more aggressive on locking in some of these CDs. So some of these CDs, we've just turned over into five-year investments, so we're not going to see the full impact of those interest rates for a few years out. Parking facility charges, another one of these where our budget was substantially less than what we had in the forecast, so we didn't use that to our advantage. Court fines, this is something that I don't know that we anticipate we're going to see a huge reduction in court fines, but I think the big factor here is the cases that are being heard at the court and then the collection part of that. So we did take a reduction there. Hub City revenue, this is the big question. Initially, I think when I was looking at this, just based on the price of oil at the time and using a very simple formula, if the price in the forecast that the state used was 48.50 and it was $24.25, my logic was that it was 50%, right? That's not the way this flows through. As that slideshow or slide earlier said, you know, some of that money comes in right away and fills in those buckets. So we don't anticipate we're going to see as drastic of a reduction in Hub City funding. The airport, we got some good news. I think that was on the news here in the last week or so with some of the federal stimulus dollars that's going to make up some of the reduction in revenues from other sources with the airport. Again, we didn't want to try to offset other reductions with that good news, so we zeroed it out and we just didn't reduce our forecast. The bottom line is, we anticipate at this point that the amount that we need to really make up in our revenue forecast is about $6.3 million, and that's still a sizable chunk of funding. The next slides, we're going to show you some of the things that we have initially here identified as potential reductions. Some of these were brought forward at the last city council meeting, particularly the delaying the fire station and the retaining wall. Those were generally Hub City funding projects. We have a number of these here from, you know, we had a NDRF confirm it that we hadn't budgeted for. We don't know that that revenue's coming. We did get that check here in the last week or so. So obviously, that's a revenue that we didn't anticipate. Park District portion of state aid, that's a pass-through. So if our state aid revenue is reduced, the Park District portion of that is reduced as well. So that's just the pass-through on our reduction. Fuel savings, this is one of the things that, you know, it's a little bit of the silver lining. First of all, we've had, knock on wood, a little bit of a reprieve from snow plowing so far in the first half of the year, but also in the price of fuel. When we budgeted these numbers last summer or fall, the market was looking a lot different. And typically, the oil market then was probably on the rise. We're anticipating a higher price of fuel. So this isn't all based on just usage, but also the reduced cost of the fuel right now. Storm sewer district cuts, and this is just using some of those savings from Hub City funding, moving those through to the storm sewer district to offset general fund. So it's kind of moving some of those savings over to relieve some pressure on the general fund. The next section that we have here in this next darker shade, I guess, all relates to sales tax funds and the different cuts. These are different equipment purchases, you know, different projects. Obviously, sales tax or the flood control is one of the big items here. This doesn't have an immediate impact on the flood control project, but it will affect, you know, how fast we can fund the flood control over time. So what the immediate impact would be is we'd potentially have to borrow more money than we anticipated early on. And eventually, we'll hit that limit, that debt limit faster if these sales tax collections don't increase. Going towards the bottom, in the equipment cuts, there was a traffic department building that was going to be moved. That was some Hub City funding with the stage or Phase 5 of flood control being delayed. This building doesn't need to be moved right away, so we can push that off a year or two down the road. And then there were some vehicle and some equipment that would also be delayed. So on the first run-through, we identified $7.6 million in potential cuts or at least delaying projects that we wouldn't have to fund them immediately this year. And we can look for alternative sources or at least buy some time so that we know, have some additional certainty on our revenue projections. The very bottom here below the orange line, again, $6.3 million was the forecast shortfall, 7.6 is the proposed reductions or what we have identified on the first pass-through. So we have about a $1.3 million cushion, it appears, at this point. And obviously, this is changing day by day as we go forward. I would stand for any questions. And I know that was pretty quick and probably a little confusing, so.
Lots of graphs, lots of numbers. Thank you, Mr. Lakefield. On the Hub City funding, for our recollection as well, that is built off of the state's fiscal year. Is that correct, different from our annual budget, January through December 31st? Theirs is fiscal year of June to June or July to July? I can't remember which.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the state is on a July 1st to June 30th, and they operate on a biennium. So not only mid-year start, but, you know, the biennium instead of a calendar or a fiscal year.
Creates a little extra difficulty in trying to coordinate those numbers as well, then.
That is correct.
Okay. Alderman Padrigula.
Just a couple of comments. I guess first of all, I appreciate all the effort that you and your predecessor, former superior, put into putting this together. It wasn't all that confusing, actually, and I appreciate that. One of the things that's also brought back is that, especially with all the volatility in the world, is maybe a need for us to have a more frequent updating. The first slide you showed of sales tax increases brought back fond memories back from about 15 years ago, when every month we'd get a table of all these things. And you'd present it very nicely graphically, sort of like the city airport director does. And I'm just wondering if we could get those kinds of figures on a regular basis, if you just email them out to us so we had some sense. You know, I feel a lot of times that I'm kind of on autopilot with some of these decisions and issues. And I know we've bought some computer programs, and in a few years, you'll have fantastic dashboards for us to use and stuff like that. But then in the interim, especially with all the volatility, you know, I'd like to see at least that first thing sent out to us monthly. I'd feel, you know, have a better context. And in that way, too, you don't have to come up here and do the whole slideshow. So I'd ask you to do that. I want to compliment you again on the presentation you've done. I don't feel as quite as desperate and bad as I did before. I mean, these are difficult times, and I certainly empathize with your limitations you have and your ability to forecast, and since a lot of it depends on the state and federal and world economies. But I really appreciate the update, and, you know, keep it coming.
Alderman Wolfski.
Mayor Sitma, thank you, Mr. Lakefield. I appreciate the report and the best attempt at this point in terms of trying to get a sense of where we're at. You and I have talked not so much in the last week, but prior to that, as some of these initial forecasts were coming together. And I just want to, I want to share my comments with you and the staff so everybody understands my perspective as we take up a period of uncertainty, which is the nicest probably way we can put it. I think we're in an environment where forecasts are very difficult. I'm not sure I can pick out a financial analyst or somebody in the business of trying to figure out what's going on who has any experience with what's going on. And for that reason, I think, I think you all are very likely to see me trend towards the more conservative in terms of keeping dollars that we have ours as opposed to taking steps and spending on things that we might be able to hedge on a little bit for a little more time. So that's probably going to be my default setting for the remainder of the time I serve on this council. I would echo Alderman Padrigula's comments. I think the volatility is such right now that it's appropriate to have this type of update, probably on a monthly basis. There's one item here that isn't covered, Dave, and I don't expect you to have an answer tonight, but I think it needs to be on our radar, I'm sure it is. But obviously, growing concern over public pension funds and the circumstances on Wall Street, obviously, we've had a very good plan in place, I think, and I've supported it for the last few years. It will not be my decision on the 2021 budget, but obviously, something I think we need to all be conscious of and aware that it, our previous forecasts might have the same volatility that all these other forecasts have. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Wolfski, one of, in regards to the pension, one thing I would like to point out there is that the actuaries do use a smoothing mechanism here. So when we've had really good years with tremendous returns on the portfolio, we don't get to take full advantage of that in the calculation. They use a smoothing technique. So that helps us in the down markets, too, because we still have some of that up market that we haven't used yet. So we don't, and that's exactly why they do that smoothing technique. Otherwise, our numbers would be all over the place. And we had a very good year last year in our portfolio. You know, we're optimistic that things were going to turn around, but we have no idea at this point. But we do, that is going to help us out and, you know, level off some of that calculation.
Any other questions? Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dave, I appreciate the term smoothing. I've not familiar with that term. It's a, you just educated me a little bit. I did want to comment about the specials. I think as we're, the special assessments, as we're talking about, you know, we're trying to get a sense of where we're at in every business in town. I'll tell you that I have concern about my own seasonal one summer gig. But in terms of special assessments, I think, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Lakefield, I think we need to be mindful of those costs as well that businesses have to incur at a time when there's no money. And I think as we move forward and you all move forward in particular, I think that that's something to keep in mind of how, and I, you know, we've had this discussion, I think thanks to Alderman Padrigula, that we can't serve as the credit union for folks that have been behind on their bills. But however, I think we still need to take a look at how we can try to assist businesses with some of these payments, you know, in struggling times. And I appreciated the discussion about the fuel savings, because as Mr. Mayor and I were speaking before, the oil today was at a negative. It's just baffling. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Fortunately, special assessments don't make up a big part of our budget the way they do in many other communities. So any other questions or comments for Dave? Thank you, sir. Then we will head back to our regular agenda here. We have to consider the report of the Planning Commission. We had two items that were sent on to us for consideration. One is a public hearing, so we will take these individually here. The first is 3.1, Hawks View Third Edition Lots 1 and 2. The recommendations are to pass an ordinance on first reading to annex Lot 4 of the Hawk View Edition into the corporate boundary of the city of Minot. Item 2, for consideration, is adopt a resolution to amend the future land use map of the comprehensive development plan from low-density residential to very-low-density residential to very-low-density residential only. Item 3 here then, for recommendation, is approve the subdivision plot to be known as Hawks View Third Edition Lots 1 and 2. So moved. Motion by Alderman Wolfski to approve. Second by, was that Alderman Pittner? Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Wolfski.
Yes.
Sitma.
Yes.
Jansen.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padrigula.
Yes.
Straight.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing, the Essential Town Homes Edition, a public hearing to consider an application by Andrew Thill, applicant and Essential Living, Inc. owner, to change the zone on the proposed Lot 1 from R4 Plan Residential District to RM, which is medium-density residential district, and to rezone the proposed lots 2 through 33 from R4, which is Plan Residential District, to the R3C Townhouse Residential District. The three proposals before us are approve the subdivision to replant the lot at 234 14th Avenue Southeast into 33 lots to be known as the Essential Town Homes Edition. Two is to adopt the resolution to amend the comprehensive land use map from neighborhood commercial to medium-density residential. And three, pass an ordinance on first reading to change the zone on proposed Lot 1 from R4 Plan Residential District to RM, Medium Density Residential District, and to rezone the proposed lots 2 through 33 from R4 Plan Residential District to to R3C, the Townhome Residential District. This being a public hearing, we did have a call out for comment, both online through the portal and other, whether it be emails or other communications. Several of those were sent in. I'm going to ask that the city clerk read those verbatim that were sent in so that we have those on record for our public hearing.
As Mayor Sitma and council, the following comments were submitted on the city website and provided to the council prior to this meeting. First one is from Blake Nybacken. He says, "Mayor Sitma and members of council, thank you for hearing this matter of replating and rezoning the Park South by Essential Living property. Below are some bullet points of why we hope you will accept the recommendation of staff and approve as presented. One, the zoning change is required because the R4 designation no longer exists in the City of Minot zoning ordinance. Therefore, we must bring the lots into current zoning standards. Two, the replating was required to separate the zoning designation between the newly-created lots RM and R3C. Three, single-story patio or townhomes are widely recognized as an acceptable transition area between multifamily apartment properties and single-family lots. To cite Section 8-2 of Minot zoning ordinance for R3C designation, the district will be limited to areas guided medium-density and those medium-density-guided parcels that are immediately abutting or across the street from existing city-family residential where townhome versus multi-story, multifamily is more compatible. Number four, we are not only meeting the required rear yard setback of 25 feet, but we're exceeding it by implementing a setback of over 35 feet from property lines shared with single-family residences to the west. We have agreed to install a six-foot privacy fence as recommended by the Planning Commission on April 7th, and we are going to have a landscape architect see what variety of additional landscaping could be incorporated in conjunction with the fencing to improve the desired buffer area. Number five, as part of Phase 1 renovation of the existing apartment building, we installed a regional stormwater system that not only helped out this property from storage capacity for future expansion, but also benefited the surrounding area and Park District property that had flooding issues during large rain events. This was funded in part by a CDBG grant authorized by then-Governor Dahlrimple in the amount of $724,950. Number six, we know that there is a waiting list of over 200 Minot residents seeking housing vouchers. The existing units at Park South are full, and we have been since renovations have been completed. While some market-rate properties may be offering rents in line with current affordable rates, there's nothing to guarantee those stay in plates. This project has a 20-year affordability period that will ensure that Minot residents have long-term affordable housing opportunities despite how the overall economy impacts market rate unit pricing. Seven, we have seen a letter from a concerned neighbor that mentioned increased crime, among other things, but that claim is unfounded and unfortunately represent a negative stereotype often associated with affordable housing residents. The residents that we have in our existing property and that we expect here include the following: single-parent households, individuals with fixed incomes, and essential service workers. Individuals employed by a city, county, school district, medical, or long-term care facility whose wages are low enough to qualify them for affordable housing. Perspective tenants go through an application and background check as well as income verification process to make sure they're eligible for the affordable housing based on area median income for Ward County as determined by HUD. Number eight, we feel that zoning should not be used as a tool to restrict perceived competition or to prohibit otherwise compliant developments from occurring on private property. The subrecipient agreement for this project has been approved, NDR funding awarded, and staff has recommended approval for this to move forward as a property-zoned and designed project that meets city standards. Number nine, Essential Living, Inc. is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization with the sole purpose of providing affordable housing to the residents of Minot. We understand this will be a change, but we believe these units will be a benefit to the community as a whole and provide quality, long-term, affordable housing to the residents who need it. Thank you for your time and consideration, Essential Living, Inc. Next comment was from Bruce Walker. Regarding the zone change for Park South, there was a question that came up about if there is going to be an easement for the public to cross our property to get access to the South Hill complex. The answer is no. We feel the easement would create issues with people accessing private property, and there's already access to the park property on Second Street Southeast via sidewalks in the public right-of-way. Some neighbors have expressed concerns about maintaining access to our property, and others have expressed concerns about privacy and ensuring the new development does not allow for access onto adjacent private property. Unfortunately, we can't make everyone happy, and will follow the recommendation of planning to incorporate a privacy fence and landscape buffers where appropriate. Thank you, Bruce Walker. The next one is from Dusty Lawson. "We are a property owner directly adjacent to the proposed townhouse project proposed by Mr. Thill. We purchased this house last year, and one of the main aspects we liked about it was there was no direct houses behind us. We enjoyed the privacy this provided. We aren't opposed to new housing, but would like to retain the privacy we had. Would Mr. Thill be open to installing a six-foot privacy fence behind his property to not only provide privacy to us, but also to all the adjacent property owners? I'm sure this would go a long way towards easing the concerns that some people may have." Next one is from Thomas Witazeski. Says, "I have some concerns on this project. Number one, how will this affect our property values? Number two, how will this affect our property taxes? Three, will we be forced into any special assessments? Four, who will be paying for any and all the extra special services before and after this project? Five, will we be given another opportunity to respond to this case or subject?" He says, "I am totally against any increase in the financial burden I'm already under and must deal with. The developer must be held accountable for any finances and costs acquired and attributed to this project." Thank you for your time. The final comments from Mary Frost. "Just want to say that I am totally against this plan. Mainly, it's going to totally drastically drop the value of my home, plus everyone else that lives close by. Would you like this to happen to all of your homes? I bet absolutely not. Think about that. I'm pretty sure that they could find somewhere else to build. Building a six-foot fence is not going to be good enough. It would have to be way higher. Also, they would have to make an alley so that we would be allowed to access our back gates. People use the back all the time, especially when they're having company, because Second Street gets too congested with parked cars. Second Street Southeast is a very busy street. If this passes, what date do they expect to start? Thank you for your time."
And that is all of the comments that were submitted online. I would look to Mr. Billingsley for perhaps a little more background on this as well. I believe you do have some graphics to share, too.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this project. With the six-foot-high privacy fence, you'll see, highlighted in black, along the west property line of the proposed site. There are approximately six homes that would be impacted by these townhomes. There's 10 townhomes that would be along this property line, and these six homeowners were primarily the people who were at the hearing, you know, expressing their concerns and objecting to the proposed rezoning and plat. After the Planning Commission meeting, I was able to contact the applicant, and I negotiated two additional conditions that they have agreed to. The first one is they're going to plant a landscape buffer in the backyards of all of these townhome properties, a mixture of trees and bushes to help block the view of these townhomes from the neighboring properties. Six feet only goes so high, and we do not allow fencing higher than six feet on residential zones, so landscaping can help provide some buffering. And then the applicant has also agreed to increase their building setback from the rear property line from 25 feet to 35 feet. So I would recommend that if the council wishes to approve the rezone and the plat, I would recommend the council add these two conditions to your approval, and the planning staff will enforce these conditions during the building permit phase. I stand available for your questions.
Any questions for Mr. Billingsley? Alderman Padugula.
First of all, Brian, thank you very much for getting these additional amenities, if you will. I had some questions in terms of the zoning and stuff. If I remember correctly, the zoning that's being proposed, or even the current zoning, would really allow even apartment buildings. And that townhouses or these patio homes, as they're called, really are significantly less dense kind of way of developing. That's the first question. The second question has to do with when construction would start. And in terms of this horseshoe, would it happen at both sides? Would it happen first on the west side? Give us some sense on that. Are these people going to be inundated with like 70 units right away, or 35 units? Or how's that going to happen?
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Padugula, to answer your first question, the current zoning is R4. This property was zoned R4 in 2013. It was approved for three apartment buildings on this site, a total of 115 units. Right now, the apartment building you see on the site has 40 units in it. This proposal would only add 31 residential units. So we're actually reducing the total number of units on the property by 44, which is a substantial reduction over what current zoning allows now. So if this matter were to be denied tonight, the applicant still has the right to build up to 115 units on this property. To answer your second question, I am not fully aware when they plan on starting construction. I know this is an NDR project. John Zakian may be able to answer that question more clearly, but obviously, this is the first hurdle they need to go through from an entitlement standpoint. Once, if they get their approval, it should not be very long before they can make any construction.
Would they stage construction in terms of, or is the demand there now fully?
Yeah. Well, there is demand, Mayor Sitma and Alderman Padugula. There are 245 people on the Minot Housing Authority's list waiting for affordable housing right now. So there is, the demand is there to reach that.
Good evening, Mr. Zakian.
Good evening, Mayor Sitma, Alderman Padugula, to further answer your question. This is going to be undertaken through a subrecipient agreement. So the, as I think we've demonstrated with our other projects, Essential Living, first of all, is willing to work with us to make sure there is no significant impact as the construction starts, and we will have some control over that in that this is all going to be driven by the NDR funds. Currently, we are only funding 22 of the units. There will be, if those units are completed and they are occupied, we could talk about another nine units, but that would be the maximum. But currently, what we're doing is 22. Essential Living has demonstrated to us that there is a clear demand for 22 units on this site. The other thing I do want to point out for transparency's sake, and so that you are aware of this, and this may be a common theme you hear from me a lot tonight as we go forward. This is a project that the city committed to in 2015 and 2016. None of you, to be fair to you, were part of this commitment, but it was a city commitment, and it was scored. Of all of the LMI housing that we have or new construction that we have spoken about, everything else is discretionary, based on proposals and due diligence. Park South was actually specified, as was Essential Living, in the Phase 2 NDRC application and in the HUD-approved action plan in June of 2016. And what you see before you is the second step of the three phases. The first phase, which we have completed, is the 35 units of LMI housing, which are 100% occupied. The second phase are these 22 units, and the third phase will be, after these are done, the nine units. But that's it, based on what Community and Economic Development Director Billingsley told you, this is all they can build versus what they might have been able to build under the existing. And we've already made it clear to them, and in fairness, they have accepted it, that we would not consider any funding beyond the 31 units. So we're capped. But I did want you all to understand that this is the one LMI project inside the NDR action plan that the city had made a commitment to do in 2016 and is part of the project that was scored.
Any further questions for our Community Development Director on the project, or from Mr. Zakian and Alderman Straight?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Billingsley, you've probably addressed all of the resident comments. But can you just clarify that for the public that's paying attention today? Just maybe touch on a couple of them from, are there going to be any special assessments? Anything that's out there that, let's see, that were clearly probably addressed at the Planning Commission meeting, but some people weren't paying attention to the Planning Commission meeting?
This is like a tag team. But to be fair, I think this is an example, not to take up too much of your time, but you have encouraged us to, especially the NDR, to make sure that we respect and go through all the standard processes and not use NDR as a way to go around the processes. And this is the classic example. Brian and I have worked very closely on this. We made it clear from the very beginning with Essential Living that they would have to go through the Planning Commission process, and to their credit, they have agreed to it. Special assessments only under certain circumstances are allowed with CDBG funds, all different kinds of CDBG funds. And this project does not structure itself to allow special assessments. So there will be no special assessments.
Thank you.
Mayor Sitma, the only other complaint that was registered was about property values, and I would address that question to the city assessor.
Alderman Wolfski.
Mayor Sitma, thank you. Mr. Billingsley, a couple of things. One, I, from a zoning and planning perspective, I really like this project. This is a, this is a classic infill. This is adding value in places where we have existing infrastructure. And I agree with Mr. Nybacken's comment that the NDR component should not be tied to a zoning and planning decision. That said, Mr. Walker's comment regarding a public pedestrian access easement is based on a conversation I had with him. And in this particular neighborhood, I actually grew up to the north of Rose Hill Cemetery, and as a kid, rode down Third Street and going to the softball complex for Pee-wee baseball, I would cut through this property, and that would allow me to get directly into the baseball complex without going over to Second Street, which, in its current form, Second Street does not have the greatest pedestrian infrastructure. We've got that weird little inset cul-de-sac, and the sidewalks on the east side of Second Street are intermittent, in some cases, not there at all. So that's the premise behind Mr. Walker's comments. And I invited him to submit those comments after he heard that I was interested in seeing a pedestrian easement through this property. Can you speak a little bit to whether that is an appropriate action of the council? If we deem that an important aspect and want to create that pedestrian gateway into the Park District property on the south side? I don't know if what I'm thinking about here is even appropriate, Brian. And so I would appreciate your comments on that, first of all. Mayor Sitma, Alderman Wolfski, I would argue that there is a sidewalk adjacent to these properties on Second Street Southeast, and people can use that sidewalk to get down to the access point to this park. It would just be a slight jog for them. It may cut off direct access to the park. It may be a slight way to get around there, but there still is access provided to the park. And I don't believe it's necessary to require an easement along this property line at this time. I would consider it more of an inconvenience, Mayor. And Alderman Wolfski. And I'm not so much, Brian, as along a property, but there are going to be some internal roadways, you know, that are essentially function as private drives or private roads. And I respect your opinion on the pedestrian infrastructure that exists on Second Street. I disagree with it, but that's okay. We can disagree about those things. Is it, if I were to offer a motion to amend to require a pedestrian access, is that an appropriate action? Is that something that is within the authority of the council to do in this circumstance?
Yeah, the council has the ability to make conditions of approval if necessary, if they feel that they're necessary. Again, we don't have the applicant here to discuss this. Makes it very difficult.
That's a particular challenge.
Exactly. And if it wasn't for this virus, the applicant would be here, and that would be a question for the applicant. But the applicant, it sounds like, is opposed to this easement. At least, Mr. Walker is opposed to it, and I know he's involved in this matter as well. So I don't, I believe that there is access. This is a local street. Second Street Southeast is a local street. It's not like a major roadway like Broadway or Berdick, so it doesn't carry a lot of traffic. I think that you can still access that park without, without much concern, I do believe. do believe.
Further questions for Community Development Director?
Thank you. I was just looking at the east side of the map there, and I noticed some buildings. Are they, are they part of this project or not? The ones labeled 330?
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Padrigula, no, they're not. This is a separate project. It's not affiliated with Park South.
Are, well, how does the density of those compare with what the developers think in putting it on the west side? Those look more dense to me.
I do not know the density of this project to the east.
I guess what I'm getting after is, the neighbors could face something like that.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. So maybe townhouses aren't so bad.
Right. Alderman Olson?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to offer a little insight to Alderman Padrigula. I believe that those, that's the Calix housing for adults with disabilities.
For their group homes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Further questions for Community Development Director? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
I would look for, this time, a motion to close the public hearing and a motion for Alderman Straight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd move to close the public hearing and approve the item.
Motion to approve the items, and I'm also assuming that is also with the recommendations for the further setback negotiated in the items from our Community Development Director?
And the landscape buffer. Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Olson, discussion. Alderman Straight, I'm sorry, Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Sitma, thank you. I think I have a pretty good sense of how this is gonna go, but I'm gonna offer the amendment that we add the condition that a pedestrian access easement also be offered, be required of the applicant to some point as best suited by the, the internal designs to the South Hill Softball Complex.
Motion to amend for pedestrian easement.
I'd second, so we can talk about it.
Second by Alderman Padrigula. Further discussion, Alderman Wolski?
Yeah, I, like I said in the discussion with Mr. Billingsley, I, I think there's a, a pattern in pedestrian behavior, which is regardless of where the sidewalks say they go, they go where they want to go. And that's usually the past, path of least resistance and very often, the shortest path. And so when, when we have folks coming from the north of this property, there's a decent chance they're gonna wander into this property in some form anyway. And so I would like to see us provide a, a clear direction of how they get through this property and how they get to the Park District's softball complex. And for, for, for many years, that was a dirt trail off the, kind of the southwest corner of the, the parking lot of the existing apartments. And I think from my understanding of the layout of the roads, we might be able to, to accommodate that through there. It would essentially then tie into the Park District's paved paths, which are, I think, a community amenity that, that are well-suited to walking and, and other recreation, and then traversing back and forth to the softball complex. So I think this is a great project. I'm gonna support it regardless of the outcome of this amendment, but I think we can make it a little better in this area, and, and that's why I'm offering it.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, one more follow-up thing, too, is I would also suggest that in the event that the amendment passed, I would also recommend that we table for two weeks so that we, because of the circumstances of the virus and, and this type of meeting process, we give the applicant the, the full opportunity to come back and tell us we're wrong in however many words they want, so.
So that would be a follow-up motion if it passes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alderman Janser?
I appreciate Alderman Wolski's intent here, and I, you know, I know that in a lot of cases, kind of harkening back to the, to the way things were before a property is developed, there are sometimes ways to get through or, you know, trails, if you will, that, that people sort of make. But I have reluctance to essentially funnel additional traffic, pedestrian or otherwise, into this sort of horseshoe-shaped set of properties, and I am therefore not able to support this amendment.
Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my, I have a question for Alderman Wolski and, and maybe for, for Brian, as far as the path. I know you'd kind of cited where you used to illegally ride your bike through private property. For a kid, but, but, in jest, would it be at all possible to place a path in, in the space allotted for the extra buffer along the, along the property? So it's not necessarily, because like Alderman Janser said, I'm not a fan, I guess, of putting pedestrian bike riders or, or kids through, going to a baseball game through a parking lot with people driving around potential blind spots. I mean, I think there's a lot of things. So would it be possible, I mean, if something like that were to be possible, I could see myself supporting something like that, if we could, I don't know if there's setbacks from private property to, to put a walking path behind a house on the edge of the property? That would tie in, I guess, with the, the northwest corner of the, the Parks property or coming along that. I, I don't know.
Perhaps.
I don't know if Brian's the, the one to ask for that either.
Perhaps, as Brian's making his way up here, I will just quickly reference a couple of the walking paths that could, better, otherwise were put along US Highway 83 and the bypass that are right next to a bunch of backyards that the, was developed with the walking path all about the same time. It's still, from time to time, do call for complaints for people veering into their backyard or from noise complaints as well using that. And this would be adjacent to both backyards on, I would assume, both sides. They would be funneling that foot traffic through there. So I personally can't support it for that. And also, to Alderman Wolski's point, I like the idea of better access, but I think, too, even my neighborhood where there is three houses to the actual way around to the park in my backyard, and yet I've had cars cut through the lawns between our houses. So I, I think that there's adequate access, but, Mr. Billingsley?
Yeah, Mayor Sitma. Derek, can you please put, put the map back up? Sorry. The, the one concern that I have about an easement is we can put an easement along that property line, but in order to get people to, to come from the road to get to that easement, we're going to be encouraging people to walk through people's yards. We need more than just an easement along the west property line. We're gonna need one to, to Second Street as well, and it's gonna have to run through existing properties. And another thing, when people, people want their backyards to be as private as possible, too. And to have people walk their, back there as an easement, I think it, it could cause some disturbances and other things, especially at nighttime. So here's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about like 204 and 210, 204 and 1419. If we were to put an easement back there, how are we supposed to get people to Second Street Southeast? There is no, no easement to get to the street. So if we're gonna be supporting, putting a pathway back there, we're gonna need it to connect to a public street. And right now, I, we'd have to go to these property owners and ask for their consent to place an easement there, and I'm not sure if we'll be able to get that kind of support.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? Alderman Wolski?
Thank you. Mr. Billingsley, I think there's, there may be a little bit of a misunderstanding here in terms of what I'm proposing. What I would be proposing is a pedestrian access that essentially extends off of Third Street Southeast and enters the existing Park South property or what will be not a part of this larger development.
Okay.
And comes in, and then probably, you know, it's probably, you know, maybe 100 feet in or at the front edge, what would be the east edge of that west row of lots. There, there's already, I believe, an access or private road that kind of runs down to create some of those. So again, I think there's a way to do it. I, I agree with you. I, I don't think the best option is back between the backyards, because I think we would find exactly what, what you described as, as we're having some challenges. That's, that's just my opinion. I think it could be done and, and be done privately such that it, that it worked, but, but I bet we'd get more resistance there than, than where we're currently at, so. I, I will share, Mr. Mayor, I, I just received an email on this specific topic. And so since we shared all the other comments, and I happen to be here, this came from Jamie Vettel. She said, "I used to live there, and my kids also ride bike through there because there are no good sidewalks." So I, I think the concern on Second Street is, is a legitimate one, and you kind of have to go over to the west side of Second before you come back to the park, which it's just, again, pedestrians, that's not how we operate, so.
Alderman Padrigula?
Comment about that. I, I'm not gonna support the idea of an easement, but respectfully, the sidewalks aren't good. I mean, if you look from that little cul-de-sac opposite 204 on the east side of Second Street Southwest, there are no sidewalks there. The sidewalk seems to end, if my memory serves, when you grew up there, you'd know better, but sidewalk going from the south seems to end at around 1419. And then you just have street, then you have some grass, then you have that cul-de-sac. So it isn't, if you could work something out with the sidewalk there, I think that would be a better solution. It is a busy street, respectfully. I disagree. And people go fairly fast there, and, and the architecture there, I wish a traffic engineer were here, the architecture there ain't the greatest. So I think maybe we could look at extending the sidewalk north or something. I'm not willing to go as far as a pedestrian easement, but I, but Josh has a point here. We gotta fix the access so it's safe. We should. We don't have to.
Further discussion on the amendment? Any further discussion? Please call the roll on the amendment for the easement requirement.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
No.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Padrigula?
No.
Straight?
Yes.
Motion fails. We're back to the original motion. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Alderman Padrigula?
Thank you. I don't mean to speak for the developer, but there are two comments I'd make. First of all, a lot of time and effort, particularly in part of the city and the developers, gone into this, and there's some ragged edges. And the impression I first had was I was gonna oppose this, at least for a while. I've been convinced, particularly by some of the concessions that Brian was able to win from the property owner, from the, yeah, from the developer. But I really would like the, the developer to come and talk with the neighbors some more. A lot of the comments were, were, were not necessary. The thing's already been taken care of. You know, some of the things had alternatives. One person wanted a fence, well, the fence was already in there. Respectfully, I don't think they did their homework. And I think if you're gonna be putting in fairly high density, not as high as it could be, housing in an area and annoying a fair number of neighbors, I think if you reach out to them, you'd be more likely to get their agreement. I think with what, you know, what's been accomplished already, I think most of them would be on board. So I don't want to chide them, but, you know, I, I really would like them to reach out more to the neighbors. I think a lot of this stuff, almost all of it can be worked out. Now, there are a couple of things that probably can't be worked out, and that's something that Alderman Wolski and I talked about privately, in terms of putting in higher-density housing for people who maybe aren't as affluent. And I've had discussions about this with prior police chiefs, in particular, in terms of crime. There's several developments like that in, in my neighborhood. And the previous fire, police chief assured me that there really isn't more crime, and he was confident about that. He said, "You, you think of it, you pay attention to it, you, you see more police cars, could probably just one big common shared driveway." But he assured me repeatedly that that's just not the case. And to me, this is a good place for, like, like Josh was saying, for fitting in, for filling in something that's there. There's a need for low and moderate-income housing, a very clear need, and frankly, it could be much worse for the neighbors. I mean, if people put up big apartment buildings, that is not gonna be good. So, you know, sometimes it may not be exactly what we want, but I think for the good of the community, for the good of this population, which is strained as it is now, this sounds like about as good a compromise as possible. Again, I'm gonna vote for it. I just would recommend that the developers sit down with the neighbors, probably individuals, there aren't that many of them, who have complaints or questions, and reassure them. And I've tried to do my bit in reassuring about crime issues and, and things like that. And I think, you know, from Josh's and I's perspective, I think hopefully, city staff can sit down with them and look at, at sidewalks and those kinds of issues a little bit more carefully, too. I don't think it's worth holding the project for that, but, but I think some fine tuning could, could really, really help here.
Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree that this is a project that, for this area, for what they're trying to do there with the townhomes, I think it's a worthwhile project. The infill aspect of it, the land's there, the, the infrastructure's there. I've had my questions on, on the true need for LMI housing and heavily subsidizing some of these projects like we have in the past. I have, I have concerns about that still, but this project, I think, is, to Alderman Padrigula's comments, a, a compromise for that versus apartment buildings and whatnot. Some of the concessions that were, that were reached to appease the neighbors, I, I think, I think that's, I think that's what this developer has in mind, is trying to work and make everybody happy to the best of their ability in a reasonable fashion, so I will support it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Motion approved. That takes care of Section 3 on to Section 4, which is consent items. I've been asked to pull 4.3 for the consent of 4.1 through 4.15. Are there any other items that need to be pulled for individual discussion? Alderman Wolski?
I was hoping to consider 4.4 and 4.10 through 4.12 independently.
You said 4.10, 4.11, and 4.12?
4.10 through 4.12, yes. So 4.10, 4.11, 4.12, and 4.4.
So we have under the consent items the remaining 4.1, 4.2, 4.5 through 4.9, 4.13, 14, and 15. Any other items that need to be pulled?
I move consent on the...
Remaining items?
List.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Janser, second by Alderman Pittner. For approval on the remaining items, any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes. Motion approved. 4.3 is the mayoral appointments, the recommendation to the city council to affirm the following mayoral appointments for vacant spots on the Planning Commission. Alicia Gates appointed to the Planning Commission with a term to expire April 2025, and Shane Leiter appointed to the Planning Commission with a term to expire 2025 as well.
Move that.
Motion by Alderman Janser, was there a second over here? Oh, second by Alderman Padrigula. Alderman Padrigula, you asked that this be pulled?
Yes. The reason for that is not to question your appointments, but I listened into the Planning Commission meeting, and there was significant discussion of reducing its size. And I guess I'm not sure if the two appointments would be to keep it at the present size, which is 14, or would be part of a process to reduce the size. There was some difference of opinion, and I don't remember exactly what the conclusion was. I think they were gonna check with us informally before proposing anything, a number, and moving any further, but they seemed to be, everybody agreed on the Planning Commission, they needed to downsize, you know, no question about it. And I think they were looking at a compromise maybe of nine people. So are these two appointments, would they be part of the nine that they're anticipating, or would they be to fill out the 13?
It's a good question, Alderman Padrigula. It would be to fill out the 15. There is another vacant spot within the ET, and I would look to Mr. Billingsley here for a little more on the Planning Commission's overall perspective, given some of the nature of change that has taken place in our community recently.
Thank you, Mayor Sitma. Alderman Padrigula, currently, we have 13 members on the Planning Commission. We had a discussion at our last Planning Commission meeting on possibly reducing the size of the commission, and unfortunately, the commissioners were all over the place. We never really could come to an agreement on, on what would be the, a good number. The good news is, is a result of that discussion, we've had several people contact us with interest in serving on the commission. So I figure, let's just go ahead and just fill out these vacant seats. We, right now, we have four vacancies on the commission, three at the city level, one at the county level. These two individuals will fill city seats. We have two individuals who are interested in serving at the county level in the two-mile. So that would bring us up to 12 once one of those two people is appointed to the commission. So that would take care of our quorum issues for the time being. We figured, I, I had a conversation with, with the mayor and the previous city manager, and we, we agreed that it would just be easier just to, just appoint these people rather than debate. We have a lot of items on the agenda tonight, and we figured it'd be a lot quicker and easier. Just... just to get these people appointed to the commission. And I think they would be good additions to the, to the commission as well.
Is the planning commission going to move further with coming up with a proposal for downsizing, then?
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Padugula, the answer to that would be no, not at this time. We will consider possibly making the chair a, a non-voting member, only to break a tie. But at this point, we're just going to just keep the commission at 13. That's my recommendation. And we're, we still would have one vacancy at the city level. So if anybody at home is interested in serving on the commission, please contact me, and, and I'll certainly bring your name to the mayor and council for consideration.
Mr. Billingsley, I, I would assume, just as the council went through some changes here a number of years ago, that this item could be brought back
Absolutely.
by this planning commission or a future planning commission if it deemed necessary, perhaps after some of the challenges, for their, for their own decision for recommendation to move forward. Well, if, if I'm not mistaken, sir.
Yes. That is correct, Mayor.
Maybe they'll draw straws. No, but seriously, I'll vote to, to approve your appointments, Mayor. But, you know, it's, it's not, there have been issues with that, and it's a cumbersome group. The council is downsized. I think these people need to downsize. They did disagree as to what the size should be. I also remember that you pointed out, you've never served with a planning commission of more than nine members, and you're a pro at this. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm willing to appoint them, but, you know, I, I really would encourage them to look at that issue because it's, it's a cumbersome body. It's not just getting a quorum, it's a cumbersome number to deal with. And like I say, maybe they can draw straws, and somebody won't be too upset if they, if they lose in a few months. But for the time being, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Thank you, Mr. Billingsley. Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padugula.
Yes.
Straight.
Yes.
Wolfski.
Yes.
Sitma.
Yes. Motion approved. 4.4 is the automated brine production system. Project number 4409, the use of the salt brine for the winter road maintenance has become a common practice for most major cities that deal with winter snow and ice conditions. Over the past few years, the city of Minot has gotten some of the small amounts of brine from the NDDOT when it is available. Availability, though, is limited with the large fleet and massive road work that the DOT is trying to maintain. As such, the city began planning a budgeting for the equipment to produce its own many years ago. On April 14th, 2020, the Public Works Department opened a, opened bids for an automated brine production system for the street department. One bid was received, and it is as follow. The Veritec Industries' Brine Boss 1400 bid price at $110,064.67. Recommendation before council is to award the bid to Veritec Industries. And the amount stated above for the Brine Boss Automated Brine Production System.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Olson for approval.
Second.
Second by Alderman Janser. Alderman Wolfski, you asked that this be pulled.
I did, Mayor Sitma. I've got a, a few questions here that are more than likely for our public works director.
Good evening, Mr. Jonison.
Mr. Jonison, two costs associated with this right now. First, the $110,000 for the equipment. There's also, your memo shows, it might have come from Mr. Sorensen, but also $93,000 for some building remodel costs. All in, we're at a couple hundred thousand dollars. The $93,000, are those costs already sunk? Have we completed that work?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Alderman Wolfski, yes. The $93,000, we took an old cold storage building and converted it to heated storage for the brine facility to facilitate that. We need the heated facility to have this in. So those costs have already been spent.
Okay. One follow-up, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, continue.
The, this sounds like it's been kind of a, a, a beneficial process. The brining, you know, I assume improves traction and helps melt the first little bit of snow, et cetera. You can explain more about that to, to your heart's content, Dan. I'll take your word for it, though. The, but my, my question is, is to what degree, to degree is this going to be a new practice? You know, and, I mean, once we get this equipment, are we going to do a lot more brining? Or we've, have we been doing about as much brining as we need, given, you know, I, I'm also curious about the ongoing costs and, and the new costs against past practices.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Wolfski, we haven't been doing a lot of brining because it's, it's tough to get a hold of. We've had to rely on the DOT. And like Jason said in his memo, you know, we're kind of, we're second in line. They make the brine, and they fill all their trucks. And then if there's some leftover, they continue making, we can get it. So we have used it in a limited amount, but brining is very beneficial. One big benefit is you can get out there and pre-treat before a storm comes, you know, evaporates, and that film or that salt is on the road. So when you start getting the snowfalls, it prevents icing up of a lot of our hills and our major thoroughfares. Also, it takes about 25% less salt to do an equal amount of brining. And that, that salt tracks a long ways with the traffic. So you get quite a benefit out of using brine. Now, brine isn't the, isn't the solve-all-for-everything, because when you get extremely cold temperatures, it's not effective. They do have additives, they call it beet heat, which extends the use of brine, you know, below zero degrees to about 10 below. But once you, once you get that cold, then salt and sand is the best. So like I said, brining is, it is limited, but in the early parts of the season, or in a winter like we had this winter, it would have been very, very beneficial, you know, where we had the one, two, three-inch snowfalls. You know, we could have done a lot more brining and got a lot more bang for our buck with that.
Mr. Mayor, one more follow-up. Dan, last question. The, anytime we introduce salt into a natural environment and, and all our streets run off into the river, do we have concerns, environmental impact, water quality impact? Obviously, myself, Alderman Straight, have been passionate supporters of trying to, to, to bring our river back to some of its maybe prior natural state. So you, you have comments, thoughts on, because that is a concern for me in terms of putting a lot of saltwater in the river.
Mr. Mayor Alderman Wolfski, I, I completely understand. There's a lot less concern with brining than there is without going out there and using the sand and salt, because when you get to the, the point where you're using sand and salt, or even pure salt on some of our hills, it's a lot heavier concentration than when we're putting down the brine. And a lot of times, the brine, when it's put down, you know, you're putting about 200 gallons a mile of a 30% mixture. So basically, it spreads out on the road, and it dries, and the residual is what's, what's used a lot of time for the pre-treatment. So I think brining is a, a benefit to the environment rather than a detriment.
Comparative. Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Jonison, refresh my memory. I feel like recently, when I was out with a tour with you and Mr. Sorensen, was this a, a structure that we salvaged post-flood that your team had retrofitted a little bit to use for this purpose?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Straight, no, that, that facility is actually to the east of this one. This is another pole barn, cold storage pole barn that we had, that we have converted.
Thank you, Dan.
Any further questions? Thank you, Dan. Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Any further discussion? Alderman Wolfski.
I had, I had intended to actually oppose this tonight, but, but I appreciate the comments, learning that, that this is the smaller environmental footprint than, than some of the alternatives. And, and then also learning that, that right now, about half of this investment has already been made. So I, I feel like it, in this circumstance, I'm willing to support.
Any further comments? Please call the roll.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padugula.
Yes.
Straight.
Yes.
Wolfski.
Yes.
Sitma.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Motion approved. 4.10 is the bus advertisement agreement with First International Bank and Trust, 3687.1. First International Bank and Trust would like to renew their contract to advertise on the side and rear panel of the Minot City Transit Bus. The agreement would begin May 1, 2020, for a period of one year with option, options to renew the agreement on a yearly basis. Recommendation, council, is to renew the current advertising agreement with First International Bank and Trust to advertise on the side and rear of one transit bus and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. So moved. Motion by Alderman Straight, second by Alderman Janser, Alderman Wolfski.
Mayor Sitma, one more time, probably for Mr. Jonison. Dan, I, I believe these guys, First International already has a, a bus wrap, so my presumption would be that they are just extending their existing advertising. Or is this a whole new wrap in some form?
Mr. Mayor Alderman Wolfski, you're correct. It's, it's to extend the existing wrap that they have on our one bus.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Jonison? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Wolfski.
Mayor Sitma, I appreciate this program and the revenue it generates. As, as I've mentioned in meetings past, I, I do not, I do not like our practice of wrapping our windows. And so on this item tonight, I'm, I'm gonna oppose it. I have no doubt that the council will pass it, but just want to keep that objection on the record.
Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Straight.
Yes.
Wolfski.
No.
Sitma.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padugula.
Yes.
Motion approved. 4.11 is the city hall retaining wall engineering contract amendment two, 4398. At the April 6 city council meeting, council made the decision to delay the retaining wall project until 2022 construction season. The proposed amendment two will simply change the construction timeline to reflect the 2022 construction date. Two recommendations before council is recommend that the council approve the contract amendment with KLJ and two authorize the mayor to sign the amendment.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Olson, second by Alderman Janser. Alderman Wolfski.
Mayor Sitma, we're doing, we're getting these projects closer together, but, but I still feel very strongly that the city hall retaining wall belongs in a conversation that we have about city hall. As I think about the wall in particular, and as I think about potential renovations that, that could be explored on this property, they seem like natural partners to me. I, I wonder if the, the, the wall project would need to be completed to the same degree it has been engineered at this point if it were attached to a, a expansion in sight in some form off the south side of this building. For that reason, I, I would feel more comfortable taking this issue up as a part of our city hall conversation. In its current form right now, I, I can't support it. So I'm, I'm actually going to move to table.
We have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second to table the motion. No discussion on the motion table? Please call the roll.
Wolfski.
Yes.
Sitma.
No.
Janser.
No.
Olson.
No.
Pittner.
No.
Padugula.
No.
Straight.
No.
Motion fails. I might look to Mr. Meyer here, our city engineer here, maybe for a little bit of detail regarding the concerns from Alderman Wolfski.
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, essentially why we're bringing this amendment in is, for public works type projects with our consultants, we have EJ CDC contracts. And in those contracts, it requires that if the owner, us, delays a contract by more than 90 days, it essentially voids the contract. And so all we're asking with this is, we want to keep KLJ at the ready so that if and when council decides to move forward that project within the next couple of years, we can reengage with KLJ, modify any scope changes or costs that we have, and then bring that back to you. So all this is, is it's moving that completion date so that we can keep them at our disposal if, if we need those services in the future. If we would modify the design or cancel the project completely, that's fine. It, it doesn't affect that contract. What we pay them, it's just modifying the timeline is all.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any questions for city engineer? Thank you, Lance.
You're welcome.
Any discussion on the motion? Alderman Olson.
Mr. Mayor, I still have heartburn about this from two weeks ago. I was opposed to the outcome that, that did occur. I thought we have put a lot of time and effort into this project. I would have liked to have seen it move forward. Unfortunately, that is, that did not occur. So I, I certainly want to keep it on the books. I would love to see it done prior to 2022, but I hope that definitely by 2022, this construction starts and ends.
Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I can appreciate Alderman Olson's points. Obviously, I've been a vocal critic of the retaining wall project, but I trust Mr. Meyer and the team moving forward that, you know, the future discussion we're going to have tonight about city hall, if things change. Obviously, I trust Mr. Meyer and the crew at the time, the project change, if a decision is ultimately made to come back with an expansion at this area. So I'm going to support this tonight.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padugula.
Yes.
Straight.
Yes.
Wolfski.
No.
Sitma.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Motion approved. 4.12 is the 1 million gallon tank demo engineering agreement project number 4530. In 2014, public works staff began analyzing the 1 million gallon storage tank on Third Street Northeast. Initially, the tank appeared to be in relatively good condition, considering it was constructed in 1946. However, upon further analysis, it was decided to hire a coding consultant to fully inspect the tank to determine the extent of modifications and repairs that are needed. This project will consist of modeling the interconnects between the three pressure zones along Third Street Northeast based on the modeling information. Distribution piping modifications will be designed and constructed to ensure the different pressure zones continue to work together along this corridor once the 1 million gallon tank is eliminated from the system. Two recommendations for council is to approve the contract in the amount of $98,000 with Houston Engineering for the Design and Construction Services for the 1 million gallon tank demolition and water main improvement project. Number two is to authorize the mayor to sign the contract. So moved. Motion by Alderman Janser for approval.
Second.
Second by Alderman Olson. Alderman Wolfski, you had asked for this to be pulled.
I did. I see Mr. Jonison came up. Dan, a couple things. One, I, it feels to me like I may have some slightly incomplete information. We're, we've learned that it's going to cost approximately $98,000 for the engineering of the tank demolition, and also design costs for water main improvements that are, I assume, necessary once the tank goes away. Feel free to...
Mr. Mayor Alderman Wolfski, that's correct. What, what we're estimating is the existing piping that's outside of the 1 million gallon reservoir now that isn't being used, there, it's piped off. So we know they're going to have to go in, remove some of that piping, reconnect it to the valley zone, and probably incorporate a pressure-reducing valve on Third Street to help feed from the, the North Hill Zone down into the Valley Zone and meter it so we don't get too high pressures into the Valley Zone.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Continue.
Continuation. Dan, what I don't have is, I, I know the cost to, to keep the tank in service, $800,000. I know $98,000 to design the engineering. I don't know how, how much it's going to cost to, to do the water main work, which that's a, that would be a factor in this equation. So do we have a sense of that in terms of how that balances out when we add it to the engineering against the $800,000?
Mr. Mayor Alderman Wolfski, our estimate, and, and right now, this is just kind of a, a staff estimate, our best guess on what's going to have to be done. There's probably going to have to be $100, $150,000 worth of, of piping, and then there's going to be the demolition of the tank. Since it's an older tank, and it may have some lead-based paint on it, there may be, I guess, extra steps that are going to have to be taken on the analysis and on the demolition of that tank. And then there's going to be, you know, the concrete base for it that has to be removed. So all in, we don't, we don't expect it's going to be more than probably $650,000 for all the demolition and the water main work. As an example, the North Hill Tower, when we had that removed, when the new one and a half million gallon tower went up, we got a very good bid on that. They demolished that tower for $50,000. So we're hoping it, it is way under the $650,000 that we're estimating.
Okay. One, continue.
Thank you. And this will be my last question on this, Dan. Thank you, and this will be my last question on this, Dan. One of my concerns is, in a water system like this, we have a tank that's been there for 70-plus years. It has, it has served us gracefully in a water system that is very dependent on pipes and gravity. And I'm concerned when we take a piece of infrastructure like that out, which is very simplistic in its mechanics, and we operate on, off the newer tower on north, the northwest side of town, I'm concerned that we're actually losing some redundancy and losing some resiliency in our system. Do you have any particular comments on that? And now, when I hear that it's only maybe a fairly marginal savings, not marginal, $150,000 is very significant, but, but I'm, I guess I'm a little concerned and very uninformed about what we might be giving up.
Mr. Jonison.
Mr. Mayor Alderman Wolski, keep in mind the 2013 estimate that was done of that tank, I think is very low. I don't think you would get that million gallon tank built for less than, typically, you're looking at a buck and a half, a buck sixty a gallon, so it'd probably cost you, you're gonna have demolition costs because you can't just go in and retrofit that tank. That tank is beyond retrofitting. It's got leaks, it's got structural issues and everything. So you're probably gonna be looking at a million and a half dollars for a new tank, plus the demolition costs. Also, keep in mind, we have added a lot of improvements on our north zone. This tank has provided water for a lot of our north zone or everything above the hill, the new million and a half gallon tank that went in. So we have the fire storage to meet up there. We've done major transmission lines along the northeast portion of Minot that's connected, where we didn't have connections before, so that we can feed both ways from our valley zone up there or from there down into our valley zone. We made the connection that went out along the northeast bypass, 55th Street, 46th Avenue bypass, and tied that into the valley zone. So that has supplemented a lot of our, both the valley zone and our ability to fill our towers out in the east side of town and on the north side of town with the new tower. So we do have a project in the future to do some more interconnect up here. But like I said, I don't think we're gonna be losing anything by removing this tank because we haven't been using this tank at all for the last three years.
Okay. Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dan, when it comes time for the salvage of this, does the city recoup anything, or is that just go to the contractor that bids out and takes the demo on?
Mr. Mayor Alderman Straight, typically, when we bid it, we let the contractor be responsible for it and reap any benefits from it. Hopefully that it counteracts some of the cost of demolition and the dealing with the lead base paint on it.
Gotcha. Thank you, Dan. Further questions for our public works director? Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes. That is the end of our consent agenda items. That takes us to section five for our agenda this evening, action items. 5.1 is the budget amendment for the change order to install heat tape to prevent freezing on the roof drains on the parking ramps. The roofing project was recently completed at both of the downtown parking ramps. It was discovered that there was no heat trace on the storm sewer drains at the ramps, resulting in frozen and broken drains, drains as well as the water backing up on the roofs. Recommendation for the council is to approve the budget amendment to fund the change order to install electric heat trace to prevent freezing in the storm sewer drains on both parking ramps.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Straight to approve, second by Alderman Pitner. Discussion on the motion. Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Lakefield, just, is it pressing that we do this immediately, or is this something that can be pushed off till the fall?
Alderman Straight, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, right now, the contractor is there finishing up the work on the roofing, and the city engineer has indicated that if we do this as a change order, it'll be covered under the warranty of the work that's currently being done, and it's the most opportune time to get it done.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions or discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Motion approved, five, I'm sorry.
Padrigula?
Thank you, yes.
I didn't hear.
There was a pause, I apologize. Motion approved now. 5.2 is the extension of the daycare service agreement. On March 26, 2020, the city council approved a service agreement with Ressor LLC doing business as the Learning Tree to provide daycare service for the emergency personnel. The term of the agreement expires on April 20, 2020. In order to continue providing these services to emergency personnel, the term paragraph of the contract needs to be amended. The amendment provides for a term expiration of May 18, 2020, which is also a city council date. Two recommendations are to approve the amendment to the service agreement with Ressor LLC, the Learning Tree, and to approve the budget amendment on first reading relating to this expenditure.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Janser to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Olson. Discussion on the motion. Mr. Lakefield.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, we may wanna include in the motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement as well.
Thank you. Does the motion maker in the second agree?
Yes.
Indeed.
Discussion on the motion. Alderman Olson.
My only question is, why May 18? I kind of assumed that this was following a school calendar year, and that won't be the last day of school, so I'm just curious.
We were following on a one-month date to track to the next city council meeting, and if we need an extension at that point, we're gonna come back to council for these decisions rather than executive order.
All right, thank you.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes. Motion approved, 5.3 is discuss and decide on the CDBG NDR substantial amendment. On February 24, 2020, there was a special city council meeting to discuss the status of the CDBG NDR activities, the expenditures and unencumbered balances to explore possible movements of funds through a substantial amendment. It was decided to consider all of the information and follow-up at a subsequent city council meeting to make the decision on whether or not to undertake a substantial amendment, and if so, what should be included within that substantial amendment. Recommendations for council is for the city council to discuss the need for a CDBG National Disaster Resiliency Substantial Amendment and decide on the CDBG NDR substantial amendment if needed, if need is determined. Good evening, Mr. Zakian.
Good evening, Mayor Sitma. Derek, I think we have slides. Thank you. I thought it important to get to the point where we are today, especially in fairness to all of you, and this is a recurring theme, but you are the current city council. You're faced with the challenges that we are now confronting with regards to making sure we stay in compliance with all the HUD requirements. But I think it's important, especially for the public, to understand that the reason we are here today is for decisions that were made back in 2015, 16, that we're now having to grapple with. 2015, 16 is when we submitted the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 National Disaster Resilience Competition applications, and is the period when HUD approved the first action plan. The first action plan is a combination of the Phase 1 and the Phase 2 National Disaster Resilience Competition Grants. In that action plan, and which was the basis of the scoring that allowed Minot to get the award of $74.3 million, we, the city, promised that we would build 250 new single-family homes, that these new single-family homes will be built in three brand-new neighborhoods. The city would provide gap financing to low- and moderate-income buyout property owners in the flood buyout program to help them buy new homes in Minot. 302 new multifamily apartment and townhouse rental units will be built. The city will reduce the Minot Housing Authority Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher waitlist by 50%. At this point in time, the waitlist was 250, it's currently 248. City will provide two acres to spend $6 million in national disaster resilience funds for a gathering space. City will match $60 million in state water commission funds with $20 million NDR funds for acquisition. It is important to note that the $60 million is part of the city's guaranteed leverage commitment. I wanna digress a little because I don't think it's fully understood, but when the city in September of 2016 entered into a grant agreement with HUD, we were not committing to just $74.3 million. We were also committing to $460 million in leverage funds. So actually, the NDR budget that we committed to in 2016 was over $550 million, or close to $550 million. The city promised that the Minot Housing Authority would own and manage an 8,000-square-foot family homeless shelter. Am I controlling this, or is Derek?
Just hit the next, the spacebar or the next arrow over.
I'm technology challenged.
There you go.
In the period June to December of 2017, no, I can't get the door closed, so hopefully, I apologize. I guess I'm challenged in more ways than one. We realized that there were a number of promises the city had made in the 2015, 16 period that we could not deliver on. The multifamily housing market had softened beginning in 2016, but the city had made no adjustments in its promises to HUD. The same thing can be said for the single-family housing market, and again, no adjustments had been made to the promises made to HUD. The city had never identified land to build these three new neighborhoods for all the single-family homes. The city had begun 100 acquisitions in the flood buyout area without creating the gap financing program to help LMI buyouts purchase a new home in Minot. The city did not own or control two acres for the gathering space. The city had never secured a commitment from the state for $60 million in state water commission match for acquisitions, in fairness to the state. The state was never asked specifically to commit $60 million during the NDR period. The city had not consulted with the vulnerable population groups, of which you all know, they're all very active and very constructive and helpful within the city of Minot. We've worked very well with them, including MHA on the family homeless shelter plans. In 2018 and 19, we've already taken a number of corrective measures. We negotiated with HUD and accomplished a technical amendment, which allowed the city to use funds for multifamily housing to include rehabilitation and single-family for purchase of existing homes and rehabilitation. And we were able to reduce the number of single-family homes to 150 and multifamily to 183. Now, again, if you remember, we had originally promised 302 multifamily rental units, brand-new, and we had originally promised 250 brand-new single-family homes. We were able to accomplish this reduction through a technical amendment, which the city council did approve on October 1 of 2018. And HUD accepted it without requiring us to justify it or rescore the application. We were also able to drop the promise that we would build three new single-family neighborhoods. Again, we made a compelling case at that time that the market was soft, that we could not meet completely all of the original objectives that had been set in 2015 and 2016. We did get the HUD-approved substantial amendment to drop the city promise to provide the two acres, allowing NDR funds to acquire gathering space. Because we convinced them that it was still within the $6 million capacity for us to continue to build the gathering space, they did not require us at that time to do a new benefit score, a benefit cost analysis, and again, we were not rescored, and we did not in any way risk or jeopardize our funding. We negotiated an agreement with the vulnerable populations groups, successfully resulting in Lutheran Social Services Housing Building Our Family Homeless Shelter, which the city council has approved and is moving forward. One of the most significant things, if you remember going back to the fact that on leveraged funding, we promised $460 million of leverage funding. We convinced HUD to accept the city request that the North Dakota State funds used for flood control in Minot, that means for the actual flood walls or levees built in Minot, that ultimately, Minot has the responsibility for maintaining, can be Canada's leverage match, as well as funds for buyout acquisitions. Now, understand that the way this works is if any, when we get to September 30 of 2022, if we have not been able to provide all of the $460 million in leverage match, we have to pay out of city tax revenues, anything we did not provide. Now, one other caveat, good news. With the support of the city council, we went back to HUD and negotiated with HUD and got in writing from HUD an agreement that the city's commitment, which was more than $300 million, which is the bulk of, the two bulk amounts are 130 from the state and more than $300 million from, I think it was 330, actually, if I'm not mistaken, from the city. They've agreed that the 330 million, understanding that this is for a long period of time and a lot of it's gonna have to be bonded, that commitment is for 20 years. So we do not have to have the city's commitment done by September 30 of 2022. All the others, we do. Now, we are more than hit because of their agreement that we don't have to just use buyout funds from the state as the state leverage. We are three quarters of the way to meeting $130 million. So we're on track. So based on the reduced benchmarks that we negotiated with HUD, here's where we stand. We already have under agreement 81 new multifamily rental units that are in various stages of moving forward to be under construction. We have completed the 35 rental unit rehab, and that is Park South Phase 1. We are currently short 67 in the deliverables. That's workable. The sore thumb sticking out right now in terms of what HUD is looking at is the single-family home. We have, through the gap financing program we set up, we have provided funding to seven homeowners. So we are making progress. We have actually, in the past six months, done five of the seven, so it's picking up steam. I am still optim, we have allocated $3 million for that program. I remain optimistic, I'll know better at the end of this selling season, even with COVID-19. I'm optimistic we'll be much further along in that respect, which will be a significant help for us in meeting the numbers. We currently have an agreement, which again, this council approved last year, and we're getting to a point where they're gonna be able to begin during this construction season. We have an agreement with the Minot Area Community Land Trust, and again, understanding the balance we need to maintain between new and rehab, and again, getting HUD to buy into the fact that we can balance between new and rehab. We have, they have agreed to do rehab six existing homes outside the flood zone that are in clear need for rehabilitation, and they will build five new homes on vacant lots in mature existing neighborhoods outside the flood zone. So we are not going to overwhelm the market. Again, they hope to begin now. That does mean we have a deficit in the single-family side of 132. I'll address how we might be able to deal with this in one of the later slides. The Minot Housing Authority Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher List currently is at 248. Our promise back in 2016, which we could not change, is 125. Now, let me explain to you very briefly why that was put in by the city as a Now, let me explain to you very briefly why that was put in by the city as a measurable way of determining whether or not we are having a beneficial impact in addressing the needs of the vulnerable population, which is low and moderate income. There are a number of different units that a lot of people don't realize are all part of HUD. Actually, the Minot Housing Authority reports to HUD. It is one of their-- it's called the Public Housing Unit. Totally separate unit from who we're dealing with, but it's an acceptable measure by HUD for a grantee to show that they're having a positive impact in addressing the low and moderate income housing needs of that population. That's why it was put in the first place, and that's why we couldn't negotiate that Now, as we grapple with the issue before us today, I think it's important to understand that there are some very unique factors for the National Disaster Resilience Program that had never existed in the 40 years that HUD existed prior to these awards and in the five years since HUD has continued to exist after these awards were made. And it is likely this will never happen again. This is truly a one-off, unique experience. Non-entitlement cities, which we are, normally do not get these grants, these CWG/DR grants. The usual practice would be for the almost-- the $170 million that we got in three different grants, normally, that money would have gone to the state of North Dakota, and the state of North Dakota would have decided how that money was spent in Minot. That is the way it works in almost every other state that gets DR funds and has cities that are non-entitlement. So HUD has expressed from the very beginning, when they first issued the first award in 2012, they have made it clear to the city that there is a high risk on their part in doing this because they understand that this city has no in-house institutional history or knowledge regarding what are the requirements and the boundaries in which a city can act within CWG/DR and CWG/NDR. But again, to the credit of the city, we have been able to convince them that we understand how to stay within the boundaries, but it's an added hurdle for us. NDR grants are the one and only time that an actual competition was used to award the money. Normally, HUD awards go to states or entitlement cities or entitlement counties based on disaster impact assessments. It's a formula they use. It has nothing to do with a-- so it doesn't come from a grantee to HUD. HUD decides and then lets the grantee know. Whereas in the case of NDR, we went to the HUD and made a case to our Phase 1 and our Phase 2 applications. Never been done before, never will be done again. The NDR grants were based on a scoring criteria because it was competition. Normally, these CWG/DR grants are based on FEMA and SBA data that determines the unmet need, and HUD uses a formula based on that information. So, actually, the allocation 1 in 2012 and the allocation 2, which I believe was in late 2013, early 2014, those were based on data from SBA and FEMA telling HUD that there were distinct unmet needs. So one grant was for around $30 million, the other grant was for around $65 million, and that was how those two grants came to Minot. We did not have to make any application. We did not have to get scored. That was where it came from. NDR was totally different. The other key thing is that NDR grants require activities that are tied to both disaster impact and resilience factors. Now, not going too far into the weeds, but it was commonly known among the 40 potential-- well, the 40 competitors for this funds, that the reason HUD was able to justify using this money was that they were going beyond the traditional disaster impact. And what they were saying is, give us applications that are going to wow us with connecting resilience, long-term resilience measures with your disaster recovery projects, and that's how we're going to score you. So traditionally, when you do a substantial amendment, you are only having to continue to address disaster impact. In our case, when we do substantial amendments or technical amendments, we have to not only address how it is impacting an unmet need from the disaster, but how it continues to meet the scoring levels that we had originally met when we got the award, based on resilience. Now, again, unique to the NDR substantial amendment factors, significant changes will trigger doing a new benefit cost analysis. The reason for that is because we were originally scored, and what HUD decided to do midway through about a year and a half ago-- because if you remember, originally, they were saying that if you made an application to us, we were going to rescore you a substantial amendment. We were going to rescore you, and if you dropped below a certain point, we were going to take money away from you. They changed that to say, okay, conditions have changed. You're moving forward. What we will do require is that you do a benefit cost analysis that shows that whatever proposed changes you're making does not score lower than the benefit cost analysis you were required to provide with the original 2015-2016 application. I will tell you, I've already checked. HUD has already told me that, for instance, if we delete the gathering space or any other significant major project, they are going to require a benefit cost analysis. So they're already on record with that.
John--
Yeah.
--brief interruption. When you say when they're already on record with that, do we get that in writing in some form?
Yeah, I got it in writing from their director--
Yep.
--from above Terry, so I got it in writing. Just so you know, what happened is, we had this original meeting, which is now more than a month ago, and there was, it seemed to be, a consensus. So I figured I'd better reach out. There was a consensus in terms of a feeling about the future of the gathering space. So I reached out for clarification, and I got a response back saying, yes, it's going to require benefit cost analysis. Again, remember that this is a competition. Of the 40 original applicants, only 13 got awards. There were competition rules. It's pretty consistent with what is reflected in our action plan. It's also consistent with the requirement for the benefit cost analysis. But there were specific benchmarks that had to be met to get to the Phase 2 application. So we have to make sure that any substantial amendments we do do not fall below those Now, the final piece is that it's recognized that none of the 13 grantees received the money they were asking for. We had originally applied for close to $170 million, got $74.3. Exponentially, every grantee was about the similar, although some had asked for more, some had asked for less. At the end of the day, everybody had to pretty much cut the same amount. HUD negotiated with all these 13 grantees in establishing the projects in Phase 2, which were to be funded, and the amounts to be funded were based on the grantees demonstrating the feasibility and necessity of those projects. I want to follow up with a couple of points related to this. Actually, I'll leave that last one up if I can. And then, Mayor, I'll be glad to answer any questions going forward. So you've heard me say that HUD is not going to approve a substantial amendment that deletes two major projects. That is my best reading of the benefit cost analysis rules. I do want to leave here tonight with you understanding that whatever you, as a collective body, decide you're going to do tonight, I will do my damnedest best to convince HUD through the best benefit cost analysis I can do to get them to approve it. But everything that I-- all my knowledge, everything I have been hearing from HUD, based on all the factors that I described to you here, if there is a removal of more than one project, I do not honestly believe-- I can advise you in any way, shape, or form, in fairness to you, that that benefit cost analysis will be approved. And I'll give you a couple of quick examples. I know I sent you the OMB document, which is confusing at best, but as some examples, even though City Hall and the gathering space may have scored low on the categories of, you know, wow resilience projects, they scored high in the benefit cost analysis because those two projects we could demonstrate as a city are going to benefit the entire city. So obviously, if you're going to have projects, whatever the investment is going to benefit the entire city, you're going to score high. For the acquisition that we did, the $20 million, we were able to score high for one reason because we did establish that the area that would benefit from the buyouts, which we call Buyout Area 4, the bigger area around that buyout area that would end up with the flood walls, I think one or two levees, that is a low-moderate-income area. It is the only one, from census tract-wise, that we can justify. So the $20 million that we have used got a high score because that was for low and moderate income. If we go forward with any other acquisitions, we're going to have two significant problems. One is, there are no more areas that meet the LMA. So if we do any other acquisitions, we're going to have to use urgent need. That will not score as high in a benefit cost analysis. The second issue is that when we did the original, we identified the buyout areas where we knew there were going to be projects funded, like the wall that's now going up. If we do any other future significant acquisitions, we're looking at acquiring properties that right now, in fairness to the source of a joint board, we have no clue when they're going to be funded, and they likely would not be funded for at least 10 to 20 years. So those are going to score lower because the current acquisitions were for projects we knew were going to happen. The other issue, which I know I've talked to you about, is I have said, and again, this is my best guidance to you, based on my experience, I have said to you that if you want to add funds to a project, be it City Hall, CTE, or anything else, don't go above the amount that's current in the budget. And there's a reason for that. This last item, remember that the city negotiated with HUD and got HUD to agree and HUD approved the action plan, saying that the funds we've set aside, whether it's for City Hall or CTE or any of the other projects, is all that we need. Now, we can certainly go up and probably support that in a benefit cost analysis, but when you start doubling or more of those amounts, you're going to reduce your benefit cost analysis. You're also going to have HUD questioning, well, then, why in 2016, in the first place, did you say this was sufficient funds to do the project? And I think I've thrown enough at you, Mayor, but I felt in fairness to all of you, you needed to really understand the issues we're up against, and I wanted to answer some of the technical questions, so--
Thank you, John. Just for quick clarification on perhaps going for, let's arguably say, defunding two of the identified projects. And against, let's say, the recommendations, they go to HUD and they reject that. What does that look like for the council, for the community as a whole?
Well, Mayor Simba, the process would be that whatever you ultimately decide tonight, if you decide to do a substantial amendment, there is going to be-- I will tell you, it's probably going to take us 60 days to get something prepared to go to the-- maybe even 90 days to go to HUD because we're going to have to do a new benefit cost analysis. I can tell you that the original benefit cost analysis that was done by the city took 90 days. It's-- it's-- you know, I may be able to speed it up a little, but I don't think I'm going to be able to speed it up a lot. It's just the nature of what you have to put in there. We will take it to HUD. There probably will be some back and forth. They may ask for some clarification. I may be able to tweak the numbers and tweak the figures. But if HUD comes back and says, this is not a satisfactory benefit cost analysis, what I would then have to do is come back to you and say, we have to do something else. HUD-- I mean, to be transparent, HUD is not going to tell us, you know, bad grantee and you're going to lose money. But they will come back and say that you've got to go back and redo it. They might be specific. They might say that, you know, you can delete one project, or they might tell us, you know, you've just got to decide. Here are the parameters we gave you. Here's the reasons why we can't approve this because this benefit cost analysis doesn't meet the hurdles necessary, and it's up to you to decide. I mean, that could be-- and then it'll be up to us. So in the long term, what we're probably talking about is if-- if at the end of, let's say, 120 to 150-day process, HUD says no, then we've lost 150 days. But-- and then we'd have to scramble, but we don't lose any money, and we just go back to the drawing board. The other thing I do want to point out, and I apologize for not having done this beforehand, there are two reasons why a decision is really needed tonight, specifically in the context of the gathering space. I have stretched this process out as long as humanly possible that fits within the HUD rules. We did receive the release of funds for Site 3 a month ago. A month is fine. Once you get past a month sitting on it and not making an offer to the property owner, HUD is going to start looking cross-eyed at us. But also, in fairness, I've had to fully be transparent and disclose to the property owner. So he is sitting there waiting to find out if he's going to get an offer or not. And in fairness to him, that decision also has to be made.
Alderman, straight.
Thank you, John. Comprehensive, as usual. I appreciate it. I guess, Mr. Mayor, at this time--
I have an idea. I would like to--
Mr. Straight, if I might--
Sure.
--give that follow-up question--
Sure.
--from Mr. Zakian before we start talking about concepts. But, John, HUD wants us to act within a month of their release of funds. What factor does a global pandemic that nobody has ever seen before and that we are responding to in real time with extraordinary uncertainty, what factor does that play into our one-month timeline? And then I'll ask another question. An exceptionally challenging and difficult decision earlier today that also creates challenges. Let's just put it that way. Two weeks? Is this-- I mean, realistically, if this decision doesn't happen tonight-- and I just want to know because, you know, we've-- that statement, it just-- it makes me want to double-check it a little bit, I guess. That's what I'm asking here. Mr. Zakian.
Mayor Simba, Alderman Wolfski. To answer the first part of your question, when I say that I've stretched this as far as we can without making an offer, it's the process set up by the Uniform Relocation Act. It's not HUD rule. It's a federal rule. They expect you-- the key aspect of that-- and I have sent the statute to you two or three times. The statute says that a city cannot intentionally delay an offer. That's in the statute. In my experience, I can justify 30 days because I can say that I've had to consult with the city assessor following the volunteer acquisition process we're following and get their best information on the value of this property, and then, since I'm going to be making the offer, I have to deliberate on that. That can take 30 days. Stretching it any further is really putting us at risk of getting slapped for not following the URA requirement of being diligent in your offers and not intentionally delaying. The reason for that is that they don't want-- "they" meaning the statute, and the Department of Transportation that enforces the statute. They don't want cities or counties or states delaying offers to make property owners more nervous and not feel that they have-- you know, that they don't feel they have an equal standing in negotiating the price. I mean, that's the reason. In terms of your answer about COVID-19 and the action that took place earlier today, we have received verbal guidance several times from HUD that while they understand there could be ramifications of COVID-19 in terms of the overall picture of our projects, we should do our best not to allow-- we should do our best not to allow COVID-19 to slow our process down. Quick example, we are still pursuing acquisitions, we are still negotiating. Instead of negotiating in person, we are negotiating by phone and via email, and it's working. So as long as you can adapt and adjust, they're fine.
Continue.
John.
So I understand the fact that we have, we have previously granted you authority to keep moving this process, and, and that feels to me like sort of one of the sticking points in terms of your 30 days, because the council has not taken a formal action, and therefore, the assumption is that our previous action continues to guide. But let me just present a scenario here tonight, which is, we take formal action to not purchase property amidst, amongst a significant uncertain financial circumstance. I appreciate HUD wanting to protect the property owner, and I, frankly, in almost every situation, I would want to provide clarity to the property owner as quickly as possible. That's how I would prefer to treat people. Make a decision, or don't, and cut them loose. But, but it does not seem unreasonable to me, as a, as essentially the Green Light Board, for a purchase of property to have cold feet against a significant investment in light of what's going on. And so I, I say this and I share these comments, because I feel coerced right now into, into making an action in light of a situation, and I don't think HUD wants to be coercing cities either. But, but that's how I feel, and, and I, and so I have to air that out, because this, this "we have to decide this tonight" issue is very problematic for me. Now, if, if we need to take an action that says the city council formally suggests that we place a moratorium on purchasing property amidst an unfi, I feel like that gives you the guidance, right? That gives you the protection to say, they took a step back, because they are uncertain of things. But, and I'll let my comments go there, but I, I am just, I am really uncomfortable with this language that suggests we have to do this tonight, and, and I, I'm not there. I don't think I'm going to get there by the end of this meeting, in any form.
Other questions for Mr. Zakian? Alderman Padugula.
Forgive me, it's, it's been a long day. What specific action are we being asked to take today?
Sure. Mayor Sima, Alderman Padugula. Well, what I was referring to with the gathering space was the discussion that Alderman Wolfski and I had, is, we're at a point, and I just wanted, for full disclosure, we're at a point now, where if it was decided that no action is taken tonight, based on the Uniform Relocation Act, based on the fact that we have release of funds, we've had it for more than 30 days, I am obligated, under the rules, to make an offer to the property owner in Site Three.
So we're talking here about making a decision about the gathering space, whether we go forward with the process of purchasing it or not? Is that what we're talking about? That's what we're confined to, or limited to?
Mayor Sima and Alderman Padugula, you can't just decide not to go forward with the gathering space. If you decide you don't want to go forward with the gathering space, then we're talking about a substantial amendment that has to be decided.
And that's our single shot?
Yep.
At any major change?
Yep.
Okay. Well, makes it clearer. Thank you.
For clarification on that, John, with the substantial amendment, if I'm, if I'm following our timeline that we approved recently, that is coming up down, down the road, but not necessarily for the gathering space, as you, as you pointed out.
Based on the timeline that this council approved, that I had recommended, and I submitted that to HUD, and HUD was fine with it, we can do a substantial amendment until December of this year. Now, I picked up, thanks to a couple of the aldermen who talked to me, that there may have been a misunderstanding among a few people that communicate with a lot of you a lot. I have never said that we can only do one substantial amendment, so I just want to make that clear. We're not limited to doing one substantial amendment. But remember how much time a substantial amendment takes. And the last time we can do a substantial amendment and reasonably be able to know that we will have sufficient time to spend the money based on how the substantial amendment moves it, is December of this year.
Thank you for that clarification. Other questions for Mr. Zakian? Alderman Olson.
Just so that I'm clear on this too, it's a lot of information. Would it be considered a substantial amendment if we decline on the gathering space, but want to reallocate those funds into other projects? That is considered one substantial amendment?
Mayor Sima, Alderman Olson, yes.
Okay.
Now, if you want to do a bigger one, I mean, just so you know, the one I presented to you in your memo was for, to get the discussion going. In my experience, and what I know about BCA, it is an example of the kind of amendment that would be saleable, and probably literally sail through HUD approval. So I just wanted to give you a context for what we're looking at.
Any further questions, Alderman Padugula?
I'm not very good at this bureaucratic stuff, and I appreciate you being good at it. I mean, is it tonight, or can we get like a week's time, or?
Alderman Padugula, I think it's tonight with the gathering space.
Okay.
Because if we boot it.
The 30 days.
He is required to make that offer.
Okay.
Alderman Wolfski.
Mayor Sima, I think we should pass a formal action, so John understands that he has clear instruction, but, but I am, I, I think what we need, respectfully, is, is a slightly more informal setting and session, sitting around a table, almost with a, with a certain degree of horse trading. This particular environment here, just, I do not believe it's a productive way to try and go about this work, in some respects. Beyond that, you know, I took a cursory look at, at John, at your memo this weekend, and same with the next item as well, the City Hall stuff. Actually, most of the City Hall stuff, I didn't even get a chance to look. So much of my capacity over the last three days has been focused on other issues, that I, I'm not comfortable making a decision on these things tonight, and I'm willing to take whatever action we need to do to give John the cover he needs. I think we're talking about 14 days here, over a six-year project. And, and I'm, John, I would, I would formally request your guidance on what we should pass to get you to get HUD to give us 14 days.
Mayor Sima, Alderman Wolfski, I will defend any action taken by the city council. I think I have proven that, and it's been almost three years, I think I've proven that in the past three years. A lot of times, I've had to do a lot of explanation, but it's worked. I do want to share, and it kind of indirectly answers Alderman Wolfski's underlying question. We, as a grantee, and, you know, I'm to blame for this, if that's the right term. Normally, a grantee minimally goes to the legislative body for any decisions. The average grantee, other than having the action plan approved, usually does not go back to the legislative body. I have brought you everything, and I have no problem with that, because I understand that in this city, with this city council, especially in the new creation you are now, being a body of seven, that it was the appropriate way to do. And where I'm going with this is, the normal process is that these discussions about voluntary acquisitions don't come back to the council. Once the council decide, so the way it would normally work, is that once the council decided on the process for the gathering space, when I couldn't reach a decision or an agreement with Site One, HUD would have expected me, under normal circumstances, to go to Site Two, not come back to the council, go to Site Two. And when Site Two didn't work, and we got confirmation from Trinity it wouldn't work, then they would expect me to move to Site Three, and do that. And if Site Three didn't work, then I would come back to the city council. I have been fine explaining to HUD the way we work, they've accepted it. But in the context, Alderman Wolfski, of what you're asking me to do, I will do whatever this council decides. But I just, all I can tell you is what the law says. The law says you cannot withhold offers when you are ready to make the offers. But, again, if the decision on this council to wait two weeks, I'll defend that, fully.
Just for clarification, that's on, from the URA, and not necessarily?
Right, that's the Uniform Relocation Act.
Alderman Straight, you had a question or a comment?
No, Mr. Mayor, I was prepared to make a motion to try to move this process forward. I recognize that many of you might not like my motion, because it's going to be somewhat tied to the next agenda item, but I think just in terms of moving forward, I recognize that everybody's had a long day, and a long few days. So I just want to propose that to you, Mr. Mayor, and.
Are there any final questions for John, before we take motion? Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. John, just with, if a decision was made tonight to not move forward on the gathering space, would those, would we have to, in that same motion, allocate those dollars to a different activity? Or can we, could an action be taken to put the axe on that, and then have a subsequent follow-up on where to allocate those dollars?
Mayor Sima, Alderman Pittner, if you delete a, a project, you are triggering the substantial amendment, and under the rules, then you're required to reallocate those funds and submit that as a substantial amendment. You can't, and I appreciate it, and I wish I could tell you something contrary, but though, that's a clear rule.
And Mr. Zakian, that plays into the, then the recalculating of the cost benefit analysis for that reallocation?
Yes, Mayor Sima.
But when do we have to go with that second part of it, of reallocating it?
Same time.
The same day?
Alderman Wolfski.
This is the part that I don't fully understand, John, is because my assumption is, a substantial amendment requires a document in some form. We have to fill out some paperwork and, and tell HUD what we are doing and what we are not doing, and, right? Am I wrong?
You're correct. There's a set of documents.
Sure. So my assumption would be that this council could say, we are, over the next two weeks or month, going to craft the circumstances of a substantial amendment, and we are going to say, the first act we are going to take to provide clarity, so we know how much we are working with, in terms of what we put towards other places, is we are first going to decide to not do something. And then we are going to have some discussions about what we would like to do.
Right.
And our substantial amendment won't be complete until we have completed this process. But we will have, in essence, started the work and made some decisions, but we know that it's going to be a long process in making the decisions. And hopefully not a long process, hopefully an as expedited as possible, but, and then, at the end of that process, the paperwork goes in with the fully complete substantial amendment. Maybe I'm just trying to end around a process, right? And I certainly am, don't get me wrong. But this, to me, seems, you know, this, this is paperwork. I think that's what we're talking about.
Mayor Sima, Alderman Wolfski, the one thing I will definitely say to all of you, I've never seen, and this is a compliment, I know we've been going through a tough day today, but I've never seen a more transparent upfront, you know, whether you like my answer or not, I really appreciate the transparency of this entire body and all of you individually. I may not show it all the time, but I think this is all very healthy discussion. Mayor Sima, Alderman Wolfski, to your specific question, I am not aware, ever, of what you suggest, but could I tell you that it absolutely would not be tolerated by HUD? No, I can't tell you that. But I can tell you that it's never been done.
Set some new trends here tonight. That's my comment. Just one moment here. We got it? We'll check one more time. I think we got it. Okay. Making sure we're all awake and conscious here. Alderman Olson.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just going to say, I think that we have been given all of the information that we need. I think we've been given, it's been given to us many, many times, and I think that John has put together a very reasonable plan for us to move forward. I don't need 14 more days. I don't think that 14 more days is going to make a difference for anyone on this dais, and so I would like us to move forward tonight.
Alderman Straight, you had a motion to make.
I'm going to have a motion, and I'll probably include a comment or two, John, as I go. For one, just maybe a couple of things upfront. I'm sympathetic to all the people that wrote the application. In part, I think we heard from Mr. Bruce Walker, the reason why his projects have probably moved forward, is he was involved at the beginning. I'm sympathetic to the businesses that were going to be near any one of the gathering We've gone from a flood into a pandemic, and to Alderman Wolfski's point, we can't even gather. Where we're gathering is we're gathering online. To me, that coupled with the consideration about dollars, and because we're gathering not just online, we're also conducting meetings remotely, we have probably, the vast majority of our department heads are working from home, so it calls into question the space needs for City Hall. It calls into question a number of things, Mr. Mayor. So for me, and to, what I heard you say earlier, Mr. Zakian, is, if you want a wow project, and I am going to disagree with you, that if we lump two projects together, I trust our mayor, and I trust our mayor to reach out to our senators, Mr. Hoven and Mr. Kramer, and to ask Representative Armstrong for his assistance on pushing through a substantial amendment that would include combining the gathering space and the City Hall project into the Center for Technical Education that Alderman Olson chairs, I think we need a big win from this body's standpoint, and I don't think that we're going to get it by choosing a City Hall project at this difficult time because of the financial realities of where we're at. And so for that, Mr. Mayor, that, my motion would be to ask for a substantial amendment to combine the gathering space with the City Hall project, and I believe that gets us close nine-plus million dollars that would go towards the Center for Technical Education, sir.
Is there a second? Discussion on the, combining the city, City Hall and gathering space into CTE, is that correct?
Correct, sir.
The one challenge I see with that, before even Mr. Zakian speaks, is that well goes well beyond the allocation of the original amount to the CTE, and likely would substantially not meet the required benefit cost analysis that is described to us. Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Just for clarification, Alderman Straight. No, I completely appreciate that, sir. I think in terms of, from a flood to a pandemic, earlier today, the University of Minnesota at Morehead furloughed 60 employees, and I think cut nine departments. So in and amongst what's happening, Minot State might be affected, clearly we have challenges at Minot High. It leads to, let's put one thing out there tonight and get a no, and then let's come back in two weeks, to Alderman Olson's point, and, and then that's, that's redo. But let's put one out there tonight and force someone to have to say no, just so we're moving forward on a project.
Let's look to Alderman Olson here on CTE, as over the last couple of weeks, it was anticipated that, I think even tonight, that some of that was going to be relayed. However, I think over the last 72-plus hours, with all that has, has changed as well, Alderman Olson, with the CTE program and the university presidents on here, essentially, they're waiting on us right now. They're ready to, ready to roll out. If you could, Alderman Olson.
Certainly, we, we have talked a timeline, and in order for them to, to acquire a building and to do the renovations and to get the program running, they need us to start. and to get the program running, they need us to start. With a fall date of 2022, they really do need a decision on our part. So I think that making a decision tonight is important. And not that anyone is probably going to turn down money, but the budget request that they made to us was 3 million plus, and we were giving in the neighborhood of about 2.7 million, I believe. They don't need 9 million.
And for clarification on that as well, both university presidents from Dakota College at Botno and Minot State University, I wish I had that drawn up because we had, I think, some of that ready to go previously to today at noon. With that, that provides the building. And a letter from Trinity Health as well, that I don't have with me right now brought up. But they do have a letter of support as well as the university, I'm sorry, Dakota College at Botno, Minot State University, with their entire budget. If allocations close to nearly doubling, but not quite, that amount gives them enough to roll out, not this fall, but next fall for all of what they anticipated, for their needs for CTE, to get it up and rolling with the assistance from the state, from my understanding. Alderman Padagula?
Just wanted to ask Lisa a question. Just want to verify that my understanding is correct. We're talking about providing seed money to buy a building that the MSU and Botno and probably the school system and hopefully maybe Job Corps in some fashion would be running and operating. We would, if we give them this building through the NDR funding, they can get this program up and running and will run it and be responsible for it. Am I correct in my understanding?
We will not be purchasing the building. The building will be donated, but the amount of money that we're using would be to be renovation and getting the program running. But yes, they will fully run the program. It will not, the city of Minot will not be running the program.
Okay, and that's enough to have, to get it going?
Yes. And that is, both, both university presidents have had that discussion. They have put together a budget, they put together a white paper, and that's, they feel that in that $3 million range is sufficient to get things going.
Mayor Simma, if I could, because I do have some of that Thank you. ...information. Alderman Olson is correct. They did provide us with a budget that ranged somewhere between 2.75 million and 3.2 million. 3 million was the sweet spot. The proposed, the suggested item that's in the memo, brought that up to $2,720,000. Additionally, there is, remember, I talked about leverage. Additionally, we already have in hand 175,000 in leverage that was devoted to CTE. So in effect, we're at $2.9 million. So we're there. Now, I do want to understand, because Alderman Strait certainly makes a compelling case for the importance of this project. Bear in mind that we cannot fund operating costs. That's nothing to do with the action plan. That's part of the HUD rules. So what they have given us, MSU and Dakota College, is an operational plan that they can handle within their current resources. And that also meets a need that they have defined in three or four key job-training areas. And based on what they can handle and based on the need out there that will fill their classes, the most they can handle, again, let's use the figure, the most build-out they can use, to go back to your point, Alderman Padagula, is $3 million. Now, very quickly, the way this will work, once we get this going forward, is since they're a nonprofit, we will do a sub-recipient agreement with them. And whatever the ultimate amount of money is, we will provide the money to them. They will actually do all the work.
Alderman Wolski?
Follow-up on the, the Current Technical Education Center, to me, strikes me as an extraordinary need, probably growing in ways that we can't yet even imagine. And so, John, Lisa, Alderman Olson, what are, and I haven't heard anything about this project. So my information level is exceptionally low, keep that in mind. But again, with the extraordinary and dramatic change that we have observed over the last six weeks, are the assumptions that were built into that project in terms of operational costs that MSU and Dakota College, Botno are going to have to absorb, are they still comfortable with that, knowing that circumstances may not be exactly the same in 2021 as they were in 2020? Obviously, we're all trying to forecast in an uncertain environment, but has this group met? Has, have they talked about our current circumstances? Are the needs still the same?
Alderman Wolski, Mr. Mayor, yes. In fact, we've met just a little over a week ago. And the budget that was presented is about a week old. So it's very current information.
Alderman Strait?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the spectrum of trying to save time and brevity, I will pull my motion so that we can get to the heart of whatever we're trying to solve here tonight. Because...
Does the second agree? Withdraw the motion. Motion was delete City Hall and gathering space, move all monies from those to over to CTE.
And could I ask the purpose of withdrawing that motion? Because I...
Yeah, the, the understanding is we, who knew it was going to be so difficult to spend so much money? But we can't spend over and above. So clearly, if I'm hearing correctly, what I've heard, CTE needs 3 million bucks. And I think we got like 5-point-some million if we reallocated the gathering space. Clearly, then, we can't give CTE too much. To Alderman Wolski's point, clearly, there's probably a greater need on the horizon. So it stands to reason that instead of debating that more and more, which probably was going to fail in the end, that's why I felt we should hold that back and then somebody can make a subsequent motion for $3 million to just be moved towards CTE if that's what the desired outcome is.
I'm fine with that.
Alderman Janser?
I'm trying not to have to do math in public here, so, but, so if, if we were to move the money that is in your memo, John, as suggested for CTE, is that something we can just do without the substantial amendment?
Mayor Simma, Alderman Janser, I kind of thought that question would come up. Unfortunately, as the way we're configuring it, we are going to delete, which I wholeheartedly recommend. We're currently going to have to delete a number of the planning studies that we haven't done. And if you delete an activity, it triggers a substantial amendment.
Alderman Padagula?
So can we do a kind of a bargain ba-, not bargain basis, a kind of a group sale? We delete five for the price of one? I mean, because some of them are small amounts.
Mayor Simma, Alderman Padagula, actually, the entire body. For the sake of transparency. Assuming that we are going to do a substantial amendment, it is possible, if, I don't need a vote, I just need a sense so that you don't come back and chop my head off in the future. If there is a sense that, based on what we have talked about, you are comfortable with moving forward with CTE, I could do that on a non-substantial amendment basis. However, I do want to be upfront with you. Remember that I said that one of the triggers for a substantial amendment is when you have to move more than 10% of your grant, which in our case is $7.4 million. If I move 1.18, I believe it is, of money to CTE, that is, that reduces our ability to move funds in the future without triggering another substantial amendment.
Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. John, just from my notes here, can you give me the rough numbers on what we have allocated to gathering space, City Hall, and CTE currently, as they sit?
So to City Hall, we have 3.5. To CTE, we have 1,540,000. And to gathering space, $6 million. Now, if I could, if you look at the budgets I sent you, there's, there were small amounts of money that had been allocated against those costs, and that was for activities that CDM Smith had done to charge it. Again, for transparency, if you were to decide to delete one or more or add to one or more, I can move that money into admin and charge it to admin. Traditionally, when you have project support services, you charge it to the project, which is what we've been doing for everything. But if there's a clear sense of either wanting to, so what I'm saying is if you want to delete the gathering space, or City Hall, or both, you would be deleting the full amount and not a fraction. So it'd be 3, 5, 6. And whatever we had charged and spent to it, I would move up to admin, which we have funds for.
Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I guess with that information, I would make another motion. We'll just see how we go with this. To remove the gathering space through a substantial amendment, reallocate 1.5 to CTE and the remaining 4.5 to City Hall.
What was the amount on, we have a second? What was the amount on the CTE?
1.5 million, and then the remaining 4.5 to City Hall, if my math doesn't betray me.
Motion and a second?
Mayor, if I might, to make it
Please, I was just going to look for you for ver-
Make it palatable, and I would obviously look to Alderman Pittner. If you made that 2 million to CTE and 4 million to City Hall, that's close enough in both cases to the current caps where I think we could do a benefit-cost analysis.
I will agree to the 4 million and the 2 million, respectively.
A second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, again, I don't know if there's a science to putting these agendas together or not. Sometimes it seems like one item would be better in front of the other and vice versa, or we could just talk about them all at the same time. Again, I don't know if this is the appropriate, I shouldn't say appropriate, but the most conducive environment to discuss some of these things in. But we have rules that we have to abide by. And for the sake of moving this discussion along, and we have a project that we're about to talk to, another agenda item we're about to talk to, talk to next, but I think it ties in nicely to this one. I think the gathering space, we may have lost, again, with the world the way it is and the hurdles we've had to jump through with that item, I think we've lost a little bit of support in the community or a lot of support in the community from the citizens and maybe, maybe some of us up at the dais in that project being able to be done effectively and efficiently, if at all. So I think moving some of these items around to, one, the CTE I'm a big fan of. I think it could be a huge win for this community, a perpetual win for this community, and have a perpetual life on benefiting this community for years and generations. And the City Hall, that's one of the other items that we have that I know is, and I will stay on this item as far as NDR dollars, but we've got a lot of slack about whether it's needed or a want. Actually, I'll hold my comments there for maybe the next agenda item so I don't get out of line.
Any further discussion on the motion? Alderman Padagula?
I should have stepped back and maybe said this earlier, but part of the reason I'm having a hard time is my kind of congenital dislike of these bureaucracies and these rules and things. What I think would have been better for me at least to understand is what are the priorities of this community as we see them? And then try to work the budgeting and the grants and the permissions and the political activity around that. And that's how I'm going to look at it. That's why, how I'm going to come to my conclusion. To me, the most important thing that our community needs right now, besides a measure of stability and health, is training people to do things. That's been an issue for many segments of the community, the Chamber of Commerce, MADC, you name it. And I can't, in good conscience anymore, justify a gathering place. I would do anything I can right now to pull the plug on it. The first location we had was good, and I think it would have benefited businesses, the community, downtown. The second location would also have been okay. But this one just doesn't make any sense. Even if it's somebody else's money, I just don't feel comfortable. That's not, for me, a good, good, spending money on it is not a good expression of our community's priorities. So I want to pull the plug on the gathering space. I'm sorry, maybe we can have some hanging gardens of City Hall or something eventually, you know, combining it with all these other things. But I'm not keen on a gathering space, and I, in good conscience, can't spend for it. I can, on the other hand, prioritize, and will prioritize, something that trains people over years, decades, maybe generations, to build, to make, to fix, to run. And that, I want to be able to get there as much as possible. I'll talk with Alderman Pittner later on, maybe on the same side or opposite sides, about City Hall. That's a separate matter. But if I have to prioritize these three things, you know, the gathering place is not on my list at all at this point. What is on my list would be improving the educational opportunities for our children. So I want to make that happen, and we'll trust you to do whatever we can. The other point I'd make, besides taking the broader perspective, and this is a good one that Shannon made, is we have some people in Washington. I feel bad, I mean, you have to deal with the HUD people. They're bureaucrats, they're functionaries, they're civil servants. People who get elected to represent North Dakota in Congress, the United States, one of the things they almost always say is, "I'll bring the bacon back home. I have clout." And I think this may be the time to use that if we're running into place problems with HUD and the bureaucracy. If we need an intervention with the White House, Senator Kramer's a friend of the President of the United States. Just about every article I read about what's going on in Washington, they quote Senator Kramer. This is the time for him to go to bat for us. The other person, if it's more of a legislative solution, is Senator Hoven. He's very experienced, he's probably on the most powerful committee in the United States Senate, the Appropriations Committee. He can squeeze in, I think, some sort of amendment or some sort of rider or some sort of language. People who work on Capitol Hill can do incredible things. And Congressman Armstrong, I'm not really familiar with him or where his interests are. But I think, you know, I think that at some point we start beating our heads against the wall, and it puts you in a bad position when you have to deal with interpretations by HUD. At some point, it becomes a political issue. It becomes an issue of what's best for the community. And I think we have two, maybe three, strong advocates in Washington who maybe can grease the wheels a little bit. So, you know, my vote is going to be to pull the plug on the gathering space, to transfer the money to the educational programs, and then we can, we can work out the City Hall thing. I really, I wish I had looked at it from that different perspective. And I feel bad I got caught up in the, in the rules and the regs. To me, the priorities are the thing that should guide our decisions. And then we, as best as we can, and I appreciate the efforts you've done, we work around that to get those objectives. So that's what I'm going to vote for and why.
Mayor Simma, if I could, at one point, I think that, you know, we need, I honestly don't know what ultimately happened, but I honestly believe that we need to thank Senator Hoven for the fact that we have this money in the first place. So I want to bring that perspective. But remember what I said, and I said it for a reason almost at the beginning. HUD has considerable trepidation in giving money to a city that does not have the 40 years or 20 years. Remember, Bismarck, Grand Forks, and Fargo have at least 20 years' experience with the HUD rules. No other city in North Dakota does. So it was a huge lift to get HUD to give the money to the city. And Senator Hoven has to have had a role in it, and he deserves a lot of credit for that. Because the alternative, with no disrespect to North Dakota, the state is going to be dealing it from a state perspective. We wouldn't be having these discussions if the state got the money instead of us. But also keep in mind, and again, I appreciate what Alderman Strait has said and also what Alderman Padagula said, but I just want to caution you. HUD gave us this money, but they expressed trepidations that we would try to go outside the rules. I think this is a very good discussion. I think we have stayed inside the rules. I can tell you from experience, you, you can't go outside the rules. You can't get anybody to get you to go outside the rules. I just want to be clear on that. But again, I'm going to be guided by whatever this council decides to do tonight, and I will do my best to represent that to HUD.
Final questions or comments?
Brief comment, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Strait, first, please.
Sorry, Mr. Wolski. John, what happens to Alderman Pittner's? You obviously know that I'm supportive of CTE, I'm not going to be supportive of City Hall. What happens if we approve the substantial amendment now, but then CT, or the City Hall project? I don't, I'm smart enough to realize the four votes in this room. But what happens if that fails and then we're sitting here still?
From a strict technical standpoint, if this motion passes, you have allocated a total of $8.5 million, $7.5 million to City Hall. You do not need to make a decision on whether or not to acquire Wells Fargo tonight. Or you can reject Wells Fargo tonight, and that does not undermine the substantial amendment. If you decide that you... The only way it would undermine the substantial amendment, since we're being as clear and transparent as we can, is if you decided tonight that you were not going to use the NDR money to acquire a building in downtown. Why not? You decided tonight that you were going to, you know, use only city funds to build an extension on this building. But if all you do tonight, if you do approve this amendment, is decide to not proceed, either table or not proceed with the acquisition of Wells Fargo, you are not undermining the substantial amendment.
Thank you. Alderman Wolski.
Mayor Sitma, thank you. I just wanted to echo Alderman Padrigula's comments. I think what it's getting to in terms of priorities is really the crux of the issue. And I also agree, the gathering space, it just can't be a priority anymore. The Career and Technical Education Center, I can talk about that one a little bit, and I can imagine the value that it might start to bring, and there is some identified needs that are ready to go. So the City Hall is a whole other question. We'll take that next.
Final comments. Seeing none again, the motion and the second before us is to approve a substantial amendment moving $4 million to City Hall and $2 million to CTE. Please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolski?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion approved. It is 8:19. We're almost three hours in. Is everybody doing okay, or do we need a short recess? Everybody's okay? Okay. We're going to move to 5.5, which is the matching funds for the federal... I'm sorry, 5.4. I don't want to miss one. City Hall Technical Team Recommendations, 4466, is part of the NDR program. Staff have been investigating potential City Hall locations within downtown. Within downtown, two buildings are available that fit the nearly... Or that nearly fit this requirement, and those buildings are the former M Building and the Wells Fargo Building. The City Hall Technical Team has reviewed a technical report and conducted a walkthrough of these buildings at the March 16th regular City Council meeting. The City Council voted to hold this for 30 days. It is now being brought back for considerations. Two recommendations before council is to enter into the due diligence of purchase negotiations for the former Wells Fargo Building, and to pass an ordinance to increase the Engineering and Professional Services contract expenditures and revenue for the City Hall analysis, which will be funded with the budget capital purchases for the new City Hall. Before we take a motion on this one, I'm going to look to our city engineer that has got the City Hall Technical Team data analysis for us for consideration.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The city manager had prepared this PowerPoint presentation, and I got it here late this afternoon, so we're going to work through it the best we can. And you've also received this late Friday. It came in a PDF attached to an email. So I don't think I need to go through this in a lot of great detail. However, if you have any questions or we need to come back to anything, just let me know. Maybe. So just some of the justification for the project, which we've talked about before. This was included in the NDR application, and currently 3.75 has been awarded plus the additional funding. We did receive a waiver for that project so that it could proceed. Some space considerations. If you've been around the building, it's obvious that this facility is out of space. We have several people sharing office spaces and whatnot. So there does exist a need at some point to accommodate some future growth. And by advancing a project for City Hall, it does restore just over 11,000 square feet back to the auditorium that the Minna Park District could use for other events. Our approach to the project was to identify major work groups that could be consolidated and relocated. The primary one was, of course, Central Dispatch to get them out of the way of potential flooding. In 2011, had the city not taken measures to protect this facility, the police department's garage space would have had about three feet of water in it. There is a tunnel underneath that garage, which houses the power and mechanical feats for the building. So essentially, if they would have been flooded, then the entire facility is without electricity. And so that's what prompted this project to be included in that grant. Also, we want to work through trying to consolidate city resources into one facility, remove some folks from the auditorium, and maximize synergies between the different departments that we have. The groups that would be moved here are listed. You've seen this before. There's several different departments that are scattered throughout a few city buildings. We'd consolidate them and locate them in a new City Hall facility. A space analysis was conducted by CDM Smith here, a little bit about a year ago. And the original study estimated about 62,000 square feet of required space. It's since been revised to about 45,000 square feet of space. We did assume a 50-year occupancy with half a percent of staff growth, so that'd be a 25% total over that time period. One thing I think it's important to try to identify is what is in all this space that we need. So if you look at the existing work groups that would be included in this, we're looking at a total of about almost 11,000 square feet. And then, and that's this call out here on the side. The other square footages are common spaces that all these different departments share. And so this 10,933 square feet is the existing office space that's being utilized by staff. During that analysis, they also looked at what are some, I'll call it, immediate needs of the city departments in probably the next zero to five years. And that would be this space here, this 4,500, 4,600 square feet. If you add this, plus the, some of the common space that's assumed in this report, you get to 37,722. You add your growth factor in there, and that's how you get to 45,753 square feet. We explored several different options. Option one, which is what we're talking about tonight, is to purchase and restore downtown building. That's part of our NDR agreement. We can construct a new facility, or we can expand our current campus, which is where we're at right now. These options represented a council, and council at this time has decided to pursue option one with the space reductions. And then we talked a little bit about the revised analysis to try to bring that square footage down. Now, these numbers may be slightly out of date, just depending on the action that was taken last time, but if, or at the last item. But according to the report that we had about a month ago from GLG, the cost for the Wells Fargo project would be $12.82 million. If you look at the current... Or, excuse me, the NDR funds that were allocated to this project before at 3.75 million, our cost out of pocket would be about $216 a square foot. It's a pretty good number. If you add in the additional funds that have been allocated, it's about 133, probably a little bit lower now because of the additional funding. Some advantages of utilizing the Wells Fargo space, of course, protects dispatch. It's our lowest-cost option. We leverage the NDR funds, and we re-idolize part of downtown. Some disadvantages, there are rehab risks. We haven't designed this facility yet, so we might run into issues or things that we just won't know about until we get into design. It's a prefabricated building, so we have a box we have to work into, and so we have some constraints on that. Timeframe, obviously, is a constraint with the sunset of the NDR funds, and there'll be a property tax reduction because we're taking a building off the tax rolls. New building, similar concept. You take the 45,000 square feet that you need, times $300 a square foot, you come up with $12.6 million. That's our best guess at what new construction may cost for a facility. Advantages, highly customizable. Dispatch risk is addressed. Disadvantages, obviously, no downtown benefit. Can't use NDR funds, and it's more costly. And lastly, if we expand our existing campus, what this estimate here assumes is that this building would stay the same. We take this additional 45,000 square feet, and we'd build that onto our campus. So essentially, you're taking $12.6 million of the new build, then you're adding some factors onto that as far as how do you connect these two buildings together, both structurally and mechanically, and then we'd have to offset some parking space. So that's all included in that. We take care of our dispatch risk, and we are able to better utilize city services because they're all contained in one campus. It's highly disruptive, obviously. We can't use NDR funds, and that's our most costly option at approximately $333 a square foot. Some other considerations, obviously, I talked a little bit about property tax implications. This existing Wells Fargo site does generate about $47,000 to the city as a whole, so then you have the other taxing agencies that do get a share of that cost. And of course, we do have some special assessments levied on that property because of our downtown reconstruction project. We have street lighting and stormwater costs. So outstanding, there's about almost $33,000 that we'd have to absorb or deal with on a purchase. Assuming that we would relocate from this building, that does provide some built-in growth space for police and municipal court at no cost to us. Essentially, city staff moves out of this building, and that space is now available for municipal court and for future police expansion. About 17 jobs would relocate a few blocks away here to downtown. And of course, we have the NDR funds that have to be spent by September 30th, 2022. NDR funds could be utilized as first-in-money, meaning we spend the federal funds first and then spend our city match, whatever that may be, at the end of the project. And the city could delay its investment, meaning our cash, until after September 30th, 2022. We do have some existing tenants in the Wells Fargo building that have longer-term leases. They would occupy that building with us until such time those leases are canceled or renewed. Those would help to offset some costs. And then, of course, if there is any unused space, that could also be leased out to other folks to help offset some of those costs in the meantime, until the city would have to move into that location sometime down the road. I hope that was brief enough, Mayor. And if you have any questions or we need to revisit anything, I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Lance. And just for one reiteration of that, with the DR funds in first, it would not mean that this project has to be completed, just the funds spent by that deadline, and then could be completed after with, if in fact that was the case, with the city's own match funds. And I would look at John for...
Mayor Sitma, members of the council, yes. And this is applicable to all the money. We have to have the NDR money spent by September. It's spent by September 30th, 2022. That does not mean that if we have other funds in a project, that the project has to be completed. We just have to legitimately, which would be easy to do for almost any project we're doing, not just City Hall. The only thing it would entail, though, and it wouldn't be a heavy lift, is that if we get to September 30th, 2022, and we've spent our NDR money, but the project isn't completed, we can't close that project out until it is completed. But that would be some minor following on the part of the finance department to make sure it continues, and then when it's done, we close it out.
Questions for our city engineer or for our NDR director, Alderman Padrigula?
Just a matter of curiosity, and perhaps this has been answered before. In terms of the gathering space, which we just pulled the plug on, would this area here have qualified for it, or for part of it, if we have some money left over? The reason I'm asking that is I was too flip, and I'm sorry, it's been a really tough day in disparaging, you know, the idea of some grand solution of maybe a wall, you know, bringing in some gardens, some gathering space. I think that's necessary. And also, City Hall, and looking at it all as one concept. I think that would have been the ideal, actually. I don't think we have the time for that anymore. We have to move them more expeditiously. But part of the other thing that gets me thinking is that there was something in the paper today about, or yesterday, about the county wanting to buy the building that burned down, the lot across from the county courthouse, and make that the parking garage, or parking lot, excuse me, not a garage. God, no, I'm sorry. But also making a small park there. And it got me to thinking that maybe there were some more creative alternatives here. So I guess I was just kind of wanting to see if that had been all in the realm of possibility.
Mayor Sitma, Alderman Padrigula, a quick answer. The city said downtown. It's up to the... I mean, the city said in its action plan, downtown. So HUD basically says to the city, define downtown. When we went through the original exercise, we had, because it's a logical place, I didn't define the downtown. You didn't define the downtown. The planning department defined the downtown. I honestly don't recall if this footprint was in the downtown. I don't believe City Hall was actually... This current City Hall was in the standard defined downtown.
If I can, John. The original footprint for downtown, I believe, extends maybe right along Broadway, but it does not extend beyond Highway 80, Broadway.
There's no reason it couldn't have been or couldn't be, if we have some flexibility for some reason.
It would have to... As you pointed out, it would take more time, would have to be revisited. And then remember, the other thing is that, again, this is what we're dealing with, but you didn't establish it. None of you sitting up here is, "We promised two acres." The parking lot, by the way, that the Ward County Commissioners are ruminating over as a long-range possibility with that poor apartment building that burned down, I believe, is maybe a quarter of an acre.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any questions for our city engineer on any of the... Regarding downtown, Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. Lance, I... Pull this in.
Thank you.
Yeah, Kelly hasn't heard me a couple of times, I know. So I know we've gotten some emails over the weekend. I think we, I'm sure we all got them with some of the items that were included in the spatial analysis, whether it be the number of meeting rooms or a wellness center, or any of those items set in stone to be included in a renovation of a building downtown or anything like that?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Pittner, not to my knowledge. And I think some of those items were, when they did the space analysis, you know, they probably assumed a certain amount of rooms per department or break rooms per so many people, or something like that. In the revised space that was in this presentation here, they did remove the wellness center. I think that was around 3,000, 3,500 square feet, and the 1,000 square feet for congressional office space. So those were some of those reductions that have come in.
Okay.
Other questions for Lance? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any questions for our NDR director that we have gone and heard from at length already this evening? No offense, John. Then I would look for comments regarding the City Hall and the recommendations that are before us for... Or actually, I would look for a motion. I apologize. I would look for a motion. Alderman Olson.
Mr. Mayor, I approve, or I move an approval on the recommendations for 5.4.
Motion to approve recommendations before us. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second so we can talk about it.
Alderman Janser.
Alderman Olson, did you...
Alderman Olson, did you have anything or Alderman Padugula?
I was seconding.
Okay. Discussion on the motion. Alderman Strait.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to reiterate, I'm having a little bit of remorse at pulling my original motion. But staff have put in an incredibly long day. Many of them are working from home. I want to support that, even into the future. I, I don't think we have the need for such a large space. I know I might be in the minority on that and as a result, I just don't think this is a priority that we need at this time, and so I'm going to report it.
Further discussion, Alderman Padugula?
I'm going to make a couple of process comments here. I know there have been some recent changes.
Sorry, John, we're not quite to you yet. If you could hold on, we've got to get through five point four. Continue, Alderman Padugula, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, sir. I guess two things that make me a little bit uncomfortable about proceeding and I, you know, maybe, maybe we probably want to deal with it, dispose of it, but the one thing is that although there have been some changes as reflected in what was presented to us Friday, I think this still has the I want to say fingerprints, but it still has a tremendous influence of some staff that aren't here now, or one staff member at least. And I think as, with this, as with many other things, we've been kind of moved in a certain direction without kind of stepping back and looking at it. And Alderman Wolfsky keeps saying this and I keep voting against him, but I agree very strongly with what he, what he tries to keep telling us. And again, many of these things is too late. But I think, you know, there have been creative, potential creative alternatives that we've not explored fully. And I think not only that, but we've been moved in a certain direction that I, I'm not sure I feel comfortable in pursuing and going with unless we've stepped back a little. The other issue is that the world has changed since CDM Smith came up with these estimates and even since they were fine-tuned on Friday or before Friday. People are commuting from home. One of the questions that comes to mind is even with this revised space estimate, there's five hundred square feet for NDR. NDR is going to be done. I mean, I like you, John, and I want you to be here, but your job, your role will be fulfilled. So I, I think so many things have changed, you know, the way we work, we work from home more. I also frankly, this is a second process coming, I don't have the bandwidth. I am totally wasted. I can't think about something and make a good decision that's going to affect the community for fifty or seventy-five years, you know, this evening. I'm, I just don't have the emotional energy after what we've all been through. And what I always tell my clients when they have big decisions coming up is, you know, make sure it's a good time. And if it's not a good time, don't make the decision. You know, psychologists have been telling people that for a hundred years. And for me, this is just not a good time. Now, to get to the substance of the issue, I have, I made a list before things went all to heck on the seventeenth of this month, which I identified, I tried to do kind of list, list the pros and cons of, of doing something, of going ahead. I, I think the, the only real option, if we go ahead, you know, I shouldn't say the only real option, but I think the, the Northwest Bank Building is a, is a, is a pretty good, pretty good choice. And I made a list of eleven things that I thought, you know, favored going ahead with that. I also prepared a compromise motion. And there were only two things that argued against it. And one of the things that argued against it, and I'm not going to review these because I think a lot of them are itemized in the report and staff recommendations have been brought up and talked about before. But the two negative things that kind of surprised me, one was from a conversation with constituent, and the constituent said, geez, you know, if we can't even afford a fire station, how on earth can you justify a City Hall? And there's been nobody who's been a stronger advocate for the fire service and the police department, you know, maybe someone equally, you know, over the period of time I've served on the council. And that, that kind of hit me, that, you know, to me, the priority, if we have to choose one or the other, is the fire station because that protects people's lives. That's one of the basic functions of government. And if we can't afford that, how can we afford something else? But the bigger negative is, and this is just one single thing, is the current situation the world finds itself in. You know, oil was selling at a negative price today. North Dakota's economy is built on oil and agriculture. Goodness knows where agriculture will be. We're in a deep recession, probably will have, may, may have a worldwide depression. I don't know how many millions of people are out of work. I mean, we've, we've done okay, I think, but we're not immune to these forces. And I, in good conscience, given how volatile the financial situation, the economy, the coronavirus, I just can't see making that kind of a commitment of city funds at this point. I just don't think it would be prudent. And this is hard for me to say because logically it makes sense that we go ahead with this. But this is just not the time. The compromise I was going to propose is that we do maybe something to buy ourselves maybe three to six months' time. And talking with Lance, it sounds like, you know, we, we would have that flexibility. It would be tight. But again, then I come back to the, the political influence of our people in Congress and the Senate. I just, I'm just not comfortable to, to go ahead with a new City Hall or an expansion of this one at this time. It, it's just too much money, the times are too risky. I just don't think I can do it, as much as I think it's warranted. I mean, city staff need better place. But, but things have changed so much. And I, I'm not saying we should start all over again, but I just can't go with this tonight.
Take an opportunity to share just a little bit of what I've taken in on this, in my opinion. I don't think we're ever going to find a cheaper way to build or to expand on a City Hall facility. At a hundred and fifty-five dollars a square foot versus building new or building on here versus three hundred dollars a square foot. Now, maybe that might go down a little bit as we come out of COVID nineteen, but it's not going to be cut in half, and that is absolutely guaranteed. Given the, the restraints, absolutely, we may lose John, after September of twenty twenty-two. But we're also anticipating as a community that we hope to grow over fifty thousand. And at that point, we would have to have a position that would be tracking the CDBG so that we stay in compliant as would be required through that process. We over time, as a community, have grown. That has been proven. It's kind of the way the analysis, market analysis look at the, the stock market. Yes, there's ups and downs and, and, and big gains and big losses, but over time we've grown. And we know that at some point we are going to continue to grow. This does give us the opportunity to grow in it, but in the meantime, to utilize that vacant space to offset our own costs. Now, arguably, absolutely. It's tough to argue between a fire station and a City Hall, but we are not committing those dollars tomorrow or next week or next month, or even next year, or even two years down the road. It gives us the opportunity to spend those NDR dollars without spending the taxpayer dollars, which any other option does require, requires taxpayer dollars at that higher cost per square foot. I look at it as an investment, not only into our city in terms of the employees, the workspace that's needed. We've seen this through the through, if you just take the space analysis of today, not even any growth factor. We need that space today for, for the employees that they're sharing offices, there's, there're cubicles in the hallways. However, then you also take a look at what we're losing by having the auditorium tied up and not having some of those functions that used to be there. As well as the police department, they're out of room to grow, and they've been out of room to grow for a long time, and that's a factor that we have not taken into account. One big aspect is we've talked about the hardships of downtown as well. And we know the small businesses, a lot of our small businesses are down there. I don't want to discount anywhere else in the community, and I hope nobody ever takes offense to saying that we need to focus on downtown. We have identified that as a unique asset to the community, which is why it was identified in the NDR program. If there is a time that comes out of COVID, even if that's two years down the road, at the time when we're going to be losing our healthcare, not losing our healthcare, but they're going to be moving in about the same timeframe, that if we expect this delayed project to infuse people in any impact to our downtown, that would be an asset. I know that there is never a good time to talk about moving City Hall. And I think we've been advised throughout this by just about everybody that it is never a popular idea to expand or to move a City Hall. But it is something that in this case, given the cost of a hundred and fifty-five dollars a square foot, give or take, maybe even ten dollars on, maybe even on the downside of that, in the long run, we're, it would be impossible to match that. I am going to vote in favor of moving this forward because I don't expect a good time for this as the community anytime in the next year and a half, given all of the circumstances that continue to evolve. And I will make my only comments there this evening. Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. You kept citing a hundred and fifty-fifth, a hundred and fifty-five dollars. If Lance could, was, was that the number that was in the slide?
One thirty-three. Was it one thirty-three? Did I overstate?
Yep, I thought it was one thirty-three. I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something.
One thirty-three.
It's been a long evening, thank you.
And then with, with the additional funds from NDR, we expect that to, to dip even below that, the additional four million dollars. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was. That was cited appropriately. And if I could continue.
Please. I, I
On this topic, I tend to agree with the mayor. We're infusing people to downtown. We're allowing the police department to expand into this building as we gain more space for our, our employees in a downtown area. It's never going to be a good time. My wife and I have three children. When, we used to live in a three-bedroom home. There wasn't enough room, but without kids having to share rooms at some point, and eventually we had to move. And I'm kind of a penny pincher and I, I was, no, we're fine. I, I was one of ten kids and we lived in a five-bedroom home. So I mean, you have to imagine I was in a bunk bed until I was almost eighteen years old. So again, there's never a good time, but eventually we have to come to the realization, we are out of space. The police department is out of space. We have funds that are available to us to make this more palatable for a move and more priced on a dollar per square foot basis, make it smarter, and we just in our previous item allocated four more million dollars to that item to make it even more palatable for our budget and the community. Again, there will never be a good time to do this project. Never. It will never be a good time to, to build flood protection until after the fact, until you've run out of room or you've run out of time. So let's be proactive in this while we have these funds available. That is my thought on it. And, and I understand the concerns of a wellness center. Obviously, they've been removed now from, from maybe some hesitation from community members and, and whether that's good, bad, or indifferent. We're trying to make life, working for the city, as enjoyable and, and pleasant as possible. Even even still, again, I, I will, I will support this item tonight. I hope the, the action we took on the last item makes it more palatable for some of the DIES and some of the community, that there'll be less dollars coming out of taxpayer pockets. And, and those are my thoughts.
Further discussion. Alderman Wolfsky.
Mayor Simma, thank you. My sense of this project in the community is that it's, that it's not yet on very good footing. We have our space assumptions that, that have been questioned by some. They were put together before we completely rebuilt this organization in a matter of a couple of weeks. In January, we passed a public engagement plan in terms of trying to develop a process to shepherd these sometimes controversial projects through, and that, that plan is sitting on the shelf right now. This, this would be and should be a project that we, we use to deploy that plan. I understand the the value or the intrigue or the, the temptation that comes with that federal money. But if, if it brings us to spending other dollars ahead of other more significant priorities, then then it wasn't good for us. I have a lot, I have a lot of concerns about the, the benefits we're holding up to downtown. I, I, you know, I watched the traffic in and out of this building, and yes, there are seventy employees here. But, but that doesn't mean there can't and wouldn't be seventy employees in that building downtown if it were left to the private sector. So we're not creating anything new or the potential of anything really significantly new. We are, yeah. This is not the right time to do this project. I can't support it tonight.
Further discussion on the motion. Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to we can disagree on this, Alderman Wolfsky on this, but as far as the space needs, I would never, it would be a horrible idea for the city to build, even if they were to add on, if we, even if we were to add on to this building, I would be adamantly against that addition if we were building only what we needed. We need to have room to grow. We need to have room. When I buy a new house, I don't buy this exact same square footage. I buy something bigger so that I, my family or our organization can grow into it. So I don't see an issue with that. And if we have space that we don't utilize, we can lease it out. We can utilize the private sector in those spaces. There's nothing against that, I guess, to my understanding. I'm getting a shake of agreement in the head from, from Mr. Zakian. We can utilize that and bring people into that building still in the private sector. We toured those buildings and there's not a whole lot going on in there right now, as is. I mean, there was the vast majority of that building was vacant. There was maybe a table leased here or there, there is a dentistry in there, and there are businesses that Lance, that Mr. Mayor cited. There are leases in place and those places can stay in there and still generate traffic. Moving jobs and people downtown, I, I don't think is a bad, a bad idea. We get award after award apparently for what we've done in our downtown, but we're so afraid to move into it. And, and I think, again, I was in favor of tabling the, the, and getting more information between the Big M building and the Wells Fargo building because I wanted all the information. We have all the information. I didn't want to get more information just so I could maybe not go with this site. I wanted to have all the information. We have all the information now.
Any final comment? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
I'm afraid not.
Strait?
No.
Wolfsky?
No.
Simma?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion approved. That takes us to matching funds for the federal Chrissy Grant, the ND DOT. This is five point five. The ND DOT and MAGIC, MADC rather, applied and were awarded a federal Chrissy Grant to be to conduct an engineering study for the rail expansion at the Minot Intermodal Facility. This study is to be funded by four hundred thousand of federal funding and requires a local match of four hundred thousand dollars. ND DOT will procure the engineering services and manage the study. The two recommendations before us is one, that the City Council approve a budget amendment on the first reading to move four hundred thousand from the sales tax economic development to contract service line item in the engineer's budget to be used as matching funds to conduct the engineering study for the Minot Intermodal Facility. And two, authorize the city staff to negotiate the agreement with the ND DOT and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement contingent on approval of the budget amendment on second reading. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion by Alderman Janser for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Olson. Discussion on the motion. I think at this point, we also do have John McMartin via phone for any questions regarding the Chrissy Grant if needed. Alderman Janser?
John, are you, are you on the phone?
Perhaps he's on mute.
Hello, Mr. McMartin?
If not, while he is trying to reconnect, maybe I can look to our city finance director here for a little bit of elaboration.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to discuss this a little bit. When this grant came before us, it originally came to us as a request and it was envisioned that it would be magic fund money that would be used for this matching funds. There were some difficulties with the requirements in the magic fund. With the job creation goals and things that would have to be met, as well as limitations on how much of that funding could be grant versus loan. It also, there were some complexities with the involvement of North Dakota DOT as the, one of the grantees, recipients of that funds, MADC, the City of Minot. So it was getting to be a little bit complex. Our sales tax ordinance, section
John McMartin.
Is now exiting.
Deals with the first penny sales tax, subsection three, which is the section that allocates the money towards economic development. Says that fifteen percent shall be expended either on number one, permanent flood control projects, number two, for creation of jobs through retaining and expanding commercial, industrial, agricultural, recreational or and educational activities in the Minot area with set expenditures to be governed by the applicable criteria imposed by the Magic Fund Committee and Minot City Council, or number three, for City of Minot Economic Development Act. for City of Minot Economic Development activities to be approved by the Minot City Council, or number four, any combination of one, two, or three. So, number three is the, the section that applies in this case. This is still an economic development project. So, we feel that it would fit within this bucket of sales tax funding. It's just a little bit different mechanism how we are awarding that funding. Again, it's a project that will be managed and run by North Dakota DOT. They will do the procurement for the engineers to, or the RFQs are, to hire the engineering firms to do this. So, it's, it's just a little bit different approach. We think a little bit cleaner, still authorized under the ordinance and within the guidelines for the sales tax.
Thank you for the clarification on that. Just for perhaps a little of information as well, towards the project itself, without going into a deep dive with, this ties directly into some of the work out at Intermodal.
John McMartin.
Is now joining.
For the Intermodal. Mr. McMartin has joined us. I will defer my comments then. Mr. Janser, Alderman Janser, did you have a question for Mr. McMartin?
Well, yes. John, are you there?
I am.
I guess if you could maybe just briefly explain what this grant is going to do for the Intermodal Facility and the partnership between North Dakota DOT and M A D C as it relates to this, I guess that would maybe be helpful to me.
Thank you, Alderman Janser and Mayor Sitma. The, the Chrissy Grant was originated actually in twenty eighteen, and it was awarded in June of twenty nineteen. And then from June of twenty nineteen until February of this year, the Department of Trans, the North Dakota Department of Transportation and the Federal Railway Administration negotiated the scope of work, which resulted in the request for proposal, which Lance is seeing and that the department is ready to issue. It affects the land that is north of, north of the port. It, it affects the land that surround, that is around A G T Foods and further to the north. It does not affect the, what we all know as the Intermodal or the Port Facility currently. The study will do the environmental work and a preliminary engineering survey of the land to extend the tracks, the four tracks that exist on the west side of A G T Foods further to the north. It will set us up, set, when I say us, the community up to be able to apply for a build grant in the future to continue the extension of those tracks to make us completely viable. I would, I would also comment that there will be some that will say, well, what's happened? Nothing's gone on since A G T Foods is out there. We're continuing to work to reopen the port, and without this expansion, the port lacks some additional trackage that's necessary, and until the port is open, additional businesses will be hard pressed to get additional businesses to locate there. So, it's a two-pronged approach.
Thank you, Mr. McMartin. Any questions for John, who is serving as the M A D C interim director, as well as the president of Chamber of Commerce, for his other full-time component? John, if you would, hang on just in case that there is a question or two.
I will, and I apologize for calling in early.
Not a problem. Thank you, John. Alderman Padrigula.
Question for the finance director. Is this money already been collected, and is it sitting there, and is it, is it part of the ten million or so we had in the, in the Magic Fund recently, last time I checked?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Padrigula, this money is, is money that we would anticipate collecting. I believe in our original budget, we had almost eight hundred thousand dollars that would have gone to the Magic Fund reserves. Even with the revised projections for the sales tax, there would still be more than enough money to fund this activity. In addition to that, if the collections were to be short, I would think that they could still use reserves that are in that bucket of money for this purpose.
Can you tell me when the last time we spent money on business development was from the Magic Fund?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Padrigula, we actually had two projects that came through here in probably the last six or seven months. The One Brand Project, as well as the Revolving Loan Fund Project that-
That's true. Thank you for reminding me of that. I forgot.
Prior to that, I think the last project was Skyscopes that I'm aware of off the top of my head.
Skyscopes, and prior to that, or about in the same time frame, A G T Foods was also a part of that Magic Fund program. Alderman Wolfsky.
Sitma, a question for our finance director. Dave, if this project was being diverted before it goes into the Magic Fund, and that's sort of what, and if my understanding is wrong, please correct me, where would it go? Would it go into the Magic Fund then, if we weren't spending it in this way?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Wolfsky, that is correct.
I'm sorry, so is it earmarked for Magic Fund?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Padrigula, that money is, is designated for economic development activities, and the primary mode of that in the city is through the Magic Fund.
But, but it's allocated for that purpose.
That is correct. It is, it is used for economic development purposes, or due to the somewhat recent changes to that penny of sales tax, it can be used also for flood control.
But we can't really allocate it much beyond that. We don't have a whole lot of flexibility.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Padrigula, that is correct. You're limited to those uses.
Any further questions for Mr. McMartin or our finance director at this time? Alderman Wolfsky.
Just a kind of a follow-up from Mr. Lakefield. Is it, Dave, is it, the, the reason we're doing this, is it fair to say that the, the constraints around the the city's bullet point for economic development are a, a little looser or a little more favorable than the Magic Fund's constraints around spending?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Wolfsky, I don't know that I would say it's because of looser constraints. It's a different type of project, and some additional complexities. I think the struggle, or one of the struggles here is this is a study or very early in this project, and to try to relate that directly to job creation or retention at this point of this project is extremely difficult.
Further questions or comments? Any further comments? Alderman Wolfsky.
Just a general comment on the project here. I, I think we've identified to ourselves that, that, that the mechanisms by which we're using the, the Magic Fund probably could use a little revision because we're just preventing this from going into the Magic Fund, which is where it would actually go, but we've created a little clause for ourselves so we can spend it before it gets there. Now, this may be a very worthy project, and I'm not being critical of, of our approach in any form. I think we should just all acknowledge that, that we're kind of fooling ourselves in some respect with this. With that, I, I, you know, I have been critical of, of our economic development practices for, for almost the entirety I've served up here and, and even before. This feels like a, this project has been in the works for so long that it seems almost insane to, to just not continue and see it through, and I understand the, the challenge here, but, but I've reached a point with economic development where I'm, I'm tired of swinging for the fences. I want to start hitting some small balls and, and working the, working the little angles, and I don't actually know how I'm going to vote on this, but I, we have to take a different, different approach on this stuff. I, I, I believe that very passionately.
Further comments? Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I can appreciate Alderman Wolfsky's frustration. I think too often we don't see movement, and we are partly to blame as government. We, we just don't move quickly, but I, I think, you know, to Alderman Wolfsky's point, I think this might be a, a small ball play in this approval of this tonight, in part, you know, reiterating again, we saw the price of oil today below, trending in the negative. Clearly, we have an asset here. We're, we're developing it. This is another step in that process, and I'm supportive of it tonight, sir. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman Padrigula.
I want to explain maybe more to myself than anybody else when I'm going to be likely supporting this. As Josh said, it's something I've been working on for a long time, and I think, you know, a little bit of extra can maybe bring it to fruition. I'm not losing my patience in general, but I think this port business is, really is needing to be, needing to show some results, and I know we got the certification, which is a huge thing from BNSF. But, you know, we're being told, well, just a little bit more and it'll work, and I know the economy's slow and it's going to be catastrophic probably, but it, we just, just can't keep, you know, putting in money on good faith for, for this particular project. The thing that is swinging me, I think, is again, the coronavirus and the economic situation. One of the weaknesses that Alderman Straight identified is that price of oil is below zero. That's probably going to change at some point. But what's not going to change is the number of people who are going to need to be fed, and if we have two important things, you know, besides people resources in our state, you know, it's land and oil, and we're going to grow things, and the world's going to need more and more of this stuff, even though, you know, we'll lose a lot of people because of coronavirus. So, I think food stability, food security are going to be incredibly more important, and anything we can do to help our farmers, to help, you know, feed our country, to help feed the rest of the world is critical. And I think a facility like this will enable us to gather, collect, and ship food products. Hopefully, it'll have higher value than we've had in the past, but even if they don't, they're, I think, really important. So, I, I can justify this. Although it may seem kind of strange, I can justify this in terms of assuring greater food security for our country and, you know, making it easier to take advantage of one of the raw materials that we have, which is our soil and our, our crops. So, it's a close one for me, but I think in, in terms of finishing off an investment and, you know, investing in the future and helping support, you know, one of the commodities that we have that is doing okay, and it's going to become incredibly more valuable as the world goes downhill. So, I'm going to vote for this one.
For the folks that are home and that might watch us later as well, my support comes because we have what we didn't have in the past that took this for so long. We have the North Dakota Legislature that allocated money in a different form to get Intermodal up and running, or at least to help it along. We have this North Dakota State Commerce Department, BNSF, and a lot of other players that didn't exist before. One of the components, too, that I think a lot of people may not recognize with an Intermodal Facility is that what it is, is it's a step beyond, well beyond, shuttle trains. The hope is not to ship just commodities out of here, but getting processing in here so that we can ship finished products that are higher value, value-added ag. We've talked about that for decades, but being a major component of that, we don't, we're not going to see A G T grow exponentially without a facility like this. We are not going to see those, those facets develop, and for the first time in a long time, we have a coalition of support. If COVID didn't happen, I think we would be talking a different scenario here. However, I do have from the folks that are, I guess, in the know, that this hasn't stopped the process of Intermodal. It's just slowed it down a bit, but there is still all of the players at the table talking timeline. So, that is why I'm going to support this. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Straight?
Yes.
Wolfsky?
No.
Sitma?
Yes. Motion approved. That takes us to item number six on our agenda. This is personal appearances, and I realize we do have a closed city hall. However, we do have people, city employees that are in the audience. If anybody would want to come forward and speak on any item that is not on our agenda, this would be your opportune time. Okay. That takes us over to miscellaneous and discussion items. We did have seven point one that we already discussed early on. Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. Just some that sparked a thought from Alderman Padrigula asking a question about Magic Fund and, and investing some dollars, and Alderman Wolfsky's about some small ball kind of plays that we want to start seeing. Is there a chance we could get an update, maybe this to Mr. Lakefield, on the revolving loan fund? And I'm not asking for it now, but at a future council meeting on, on that and the, and the One Brand, I guess, kind of where, where those things are, because obviously those came out of the Magic Fund, and, and just to see where those dollars are at.
Mr. Mayor, I do have an update on the One Brand.
Please go ahead, Alderman.
All right. This came in an email just a couple of days ago. The Minot One Brand effort continues to move forward. The three partner organizations, Visit Minot, the Minot Area Development Corporation, and the Minot Area Chamber of Commerce, along with support from the City of Minot, are meeting and have made a few adjustments to the original plan due to COVID nineteen. The initial rollout was scheduled to coincide with the Visit Minot annual meeting originally scheduled in April. The team has, the team not only is taking into account the gaps identified in the I E D C report, but two, the current environment. This letter was written by Bracka Kramer. It says, "I will have more to report in mid-May, and I'm happy to see the work by this team continue. Now, more than ever, we will need to bring the community together and speak with one voice."
And we can look for some of that further information and on the road as well. Thank you, Alderman Pittner. Alderman Straight?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say, Alderman Pittner, I'll see to it. I sit on Service Basin, and we'll have that presented for next two weeks.
Alderman Padrigula.
Just three comments about what's happened earlier today. I don't know if we're going to talk about ratifying Mr. Lakefield as our acting city manager. I'd feel more comfortable if we did that, so he knew he had the support of the entire council. But that's one thing I'd like to see us do, is to give, give some power there, give some formal authorization, and not just have it a fallback option. There are two other things I'd like to say about what happened. The first thing is I wanted to express my regret, my, and for what city employees had to endure. I feel really badly about what happened, and, you know, I feel for them, and I feel very badly. I also feel badly, too, for the employee that we had to terminate. He has a family, has a spouse. It's a rather ignominious way to end your career. What started off like a very promising career, and I think still has some promise. So, I just want to kind of recognize the, kind of the human toil, the human turmoil, the, the human suffering, you know, nothing like COVID, but, you know, we've experienced, and I feel very badly about that, and I'll certainly do everything I can to kind of make, make our city, our, our city employees whole again. I feel very badly for them, and I extend my sympathies. The second comment I wanted to make in that regard is I think we really need to sit down as a council in probably a week, week and a half, and talk about what happened and do what I think people, public safety, call an after-action analysis, maybe in the accounting field they do, too, when something has happened with a business. I have a list already of twenty things that I'd like us to talk about, you know, at the end of a lengthy meeting, you know, when we have, or when we have all this other business to transact, it's not a good time. But I think as a council, we need to sit back and, and look at what happened and learn from it. I guess most of the things I've mentioned here are suggestions that I have that I'd like us to consider that would help us to kind of move forward again. So, I really would like to see a special meeting of the council within the next couple of weeks after some of the shock is worn off, so we can start planning and taking advantage of, of what's, what we've gone through and, and kind of learned some lessons from it and, you know, try to improve it for the future. And again, I would like to see that apart from the regular process. We have enough business. We have enough stuff to take care of in the normal channels. So, those are the three things I wanted to say.
Alderman Straight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I'm going to come back to Alderman Padrigula's point, but Mr. Pittner, I had originally intended to have a discussion tonight at the end of the meeting with the current. We had an applicant for the economic development position who stepped away. You received an email late Friday. It'd be my intent in two weeks that we have a more robust discussion about that position. I spoke to the mayor about that earlier, so. And, Mr. Mayor, I, I know it's incredibly late, and I, I want to recognize the staff who have had an incredibly difficult day today as well. Director Lakefield, I, I would like to ask you at this time if you would be comfortable serving as the, you know, the city manager for a couple of weeks. Mr. Mayor, it'd be my intent, and I think-
Mr. Mayor, it'd be my intent, and I think we all have an opinion, but my intent in two weeks' time, I spoke with Mr. Meyer today and Ms. Hendershot prior, but I, I would like to see our council recognizing that there's going to be a new council in a period of time, that we move to what Alderman Wolfski has called a triumvirate. We would have three leaders kind of lead us for a period of time, and I'd like to flush that out in two weeks' time, but I'm very comfortable with Mr. Lakefield. I know it's been a challenging day for everyone, and Dave, I appreciate you stepping up today in more ways than the public or anyone will ever know. So, thank you, sir.
Alderman Wolfski.
Mayor, I'll speak to, my name was invoked, so I'm going to comment briefly, but what I see here is obviously a very challenging time and, but also maybe an opportunity in some respects. We, we have an interim period for a lot of reasons, and I'm sure we could all probably make a, make a list. It, it might not be prudent-wise or even possible to, to begin a, a search right away. So, so imagining that we have some time, maybe there are some, maybe there's some governance models, maybe there are some new ways to, to sort of encourage collaboration, maybe there are ways to, to bring the council to a more engaged place in the work and, and check our systems to see if there aren't improvements that can be made that, that prevent us from, that give us a better chance of, of not ending up in a similar place in the future. And I'm going to formalize some of those ideas, and that is really all they are going to be, is, is ideas, and I hope we, the council, have a robust discussion, and not just we, the council, but we, the city, including all our department heads, because everybody is impacted by all of this. And, and I want everybody's feedback, but, but I think if we, if we think of this as a little bit of an opportunity, we might be able to discover some really valuable and, and worthy new concepts. So that's what I'm going to be doing for a little while.
Mr. Lakefield, I think we would look to you to see if, for a head nod over the next couple of weeks, if you're comfortable stepping into that role for, I guess, the affirmation of what has been suggested and then of reevaluation.
Mr. Mayor, I, I feel compelled to give an answer here, so.
I kind of figured as much.
I, I think, you know, at least in the short term, that would be acceptable to me, and I think we have a very dedicated and capable staff that I know in the interim will do a great job and, and carry the burden as well, so I'm confident that we can get the job done.
Thank you, sir. If we go another 11 minutes, we've been here four hours. Any other items for our miscellaneous in discussion items this evening? Seeing none, that moves us to item number eight. This is adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Pittner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Janser. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.